Good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It's Monday, May the 2nd, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order. invocation this evening. We had a change of venue will be given by Reverend B.J. Marshall of Bethel Baptist Church. And good evening, B.J. Thanks for coming and stepping up here. I appreciate it.
I appreciate you asking me to be here.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, I just thank you for this opportunity to be here together. Father, I ask you to bless this meeting. Father, you say that if we lack wisdom to just ask for it and you will freely give it. And tonight, we ask for wisdom, for leadership, for direction, and for what you have for us to do. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thanks for getting us started. That will take us to the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you're able to join us, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, roll call. Megan.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Latisha Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here. That takes us to the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
Motion, a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion, changes? See and none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. Next, we're getting an update from our Van Buren County Commissioner, Ms. Gail Patterson Gladney. And good evening, Gail. Happy May.
Happy May to you also, and happy Older Americans Month. And even if you're not older, someone you know might be older, like me.
Older than what?
Right. Well, relative, I guess.
It's all relative, right?
Well, there's going to be the 24th Annual Senior Expo, and that's going to be at Lake Michigan College Mendel Center, May 5th, from 10 to 3 o'clock. And it's in celebration of Older Americans Month. And the theme this year is Age My Way. Every May, the Administration for Community Living leads the nation's observance of the Older Americans Month. And this year, the theme is going to be Age My Way, focusing on aging in place and helping seniors to plan to live in the community as long as they can. One of my friends who's 101 just last week had to go into a nursing home. But before that, she was in the community and doing well. And she also is in the nursing home has company because someone is 107. And I went to meet that person. Okay. So that is, I'm going to give the information to your staff and that you could share that with the community. Thank you, Kate. I think some of you have seen in the newspaper how the governor would like to keep Palisades open. And that, to me, is a long shot because it's scheduled to close May 31st. But they have the federal funds behind them, so you never know for sure what's going to happen. There may be people who have inside knowledge, and I don't have that. But I just wanted to say that Energy has put out a public statement following Governor Whitmer's letter to the U.S. Department of Energy. And I'm going to just read a little of it, then give this to Kate and your staff. Our focus at Palisades Power Plant remains on the safe and orderly shutdown of the facility in May. And as I said, it's scheduled to shut down May 31st, and Holtek will be taking over. It says, "Followed by transfer of the plant to Holtek Decommissioning International for decommissioning under the terms of a previously executed contract consistent with our announced strategy to exit the merchant power business. We acknowledge having recently been contacted by government officials about the facility potentially operating beyond May 2022. In addition to these conversations, we have and will continue to entertain discussions with qualified nuclear merchant plant owner operators who may want to purchase and continue operating Palisades." And I'm going to just stop there, give this letter to Kate, your city manager. In the past, it's my understanding that Entergy had tried to see if there's anyone who wanted to purchase the plant, but they weren't successful. So if you know of anyone, just let us know. Okay.
Sure.
Palisades Nuclear Economic Recovery Initiative, I don't know if you have seen that survey, it's going to be a public survey to engage in the work of Palisades Economic Recovery Initiative. They're going to go ahead as if the plant's going to be sold. The first analysis phase of the work is at an important stage where public review and input can be particularly valuable. And to simplify engagement, a survey has been developed, and they are encouraging anyone who's interested to please go to this website, which I will also give to Kate. So, thank you. As you know, the county has over $14 million in ARPA funds. And we are going to end the request for now on May 31st. So if you know of anyone who's interested in trying to put in any more requests to use ARPA funds, May 31st is the deadline, and we may open it back up in the future. And we may get more ARPA funds, we're not sure. But that's something I wanted to make sure to let you know about the deadline. I'm not sure if a lot of residents know about the Van Buren Public Transit and their services. I have another flyer for your city manager, so I won't take up too much time. But Monday through Friday, 6:00 in the morning to 7:30, they are available also Saturday through Sunday, 10 to 4:00. And the public can call 427-7921 to find out about the services. So there's that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is the broadband mapping. We have gotten DCS to do the mapping for us. And you may begin to see, or you may have seen, people around your home looking around your home. They are trying to determine how much, what internet service you have, if you have internet service. And the areas pending completion or in progress are South Haven City Township, and that's the ones that you probably are interested in. So I would just give this to Kate also. And then I have something on electronic recycling that I will share with her, too. So I won't take up your whole meeting, but I do thank you for your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Have a great night. All right, that takes us to the Consent Agenda Items A through G.
Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through G.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion, questions? All right, this is a roll call item.
Arnold.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes, it is approved. No business. City Council will be asked to consider a proposed addendum to advance fiscal year priority number seven, which is the development of a community vision statement. And I'm going to hold on the cost, and I'm going to hold on a motion, because I'd like Kate to get a little background, and we could have some discussion as a group, because we need to decide how much we want to do with this one. So, Kate.
Well, thank you, Mayor. As we did first have a preliminary report, and we did hear from this council, they wanted to see more community input in the visioning statement. We did work with Greg Grushell to come back with an additional proposal to seek more public input, or, well, public input and community input into the visioning statement. A couple things, we did erroneously add those numbers together, so the 11,000 actually combines everything. The idea was there could be five, I'm sorry, six or three visioning sessions. Also, this was set up to, almost like an à la carte venue, you could pick out items that you thought would be more beneficial to the community visioning process. So what we have is the six sessions for 5,000, or the three sessions for 3,000, but we also have stakeholder input with many of our service organizations and other stakeholders around the area. Would also include a revised report and presentation, so those are some of the other costs. And we also have Greg here, if you want to get down to the nitty gritty and see what those different elements can comprise of.
Well, he's here, so why, I mean, why don't you come on up and maybe just share your thoughts? I know, I think clearly we're going to ask to discuss six versus three. Maybe your thoughts on having done this before, similar sized city? And then just, I know one other question was like that stakeholder meeting, could those folks be invited to one of our regular meetings and get just as good a feedback? So.
Let me answer that question first. Yes, you can. And you might very well find that at the time that, as happened when I was here last month, that at the time that you receive a preliminary, now a revised preliminary report from me, you're likely to have members of the public, as well as representatives of stakeholder meetings, who are going to attend that meeting as well. My vision for the conversation with the stakeholders, that stakeholder review meeting, was to have more of a conversation with them to come up with kind of their final view of that piece of the process before that gets built into something that would come to the city council. So I think that that's a, because I look at that as more of a work session rather than just a time for comments, I would recommend keeping that as a separate item, recognizing that they will then still have the opportunity to come before you and express any other points of view that they might have, once they've seen how that all comes together in, again, the preliminary, the preliminary report for you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Let me just, very quickly, since you've had a chance to review the written proposal, and you've already heard the overview given by your city manager, to just indicate that there are two distinct elements here to this. One, there's an opportunity for collaboration with residents, and the second one is an opportunity for collaboration with your stakeholder, with representatives of stakeholder organizations in the community. And I use the term collaboration here intentionally. I don't like the word engagement. Oftentimes, engagements, processes, no offense to you in terms of how you use that expression here, but in some communities, the word engagement means we want to convince people of what we already believe to be the case. And so we're going to bring them in, and we're going to try to persuade them, this is how you should be thinking about this. I view collaboration here, and this process is laid out in this addendum, is there's more information to be gathered. The first piece of this that we did by interviewing you and the city manager and reviewing some of your other documents, had a very specific point of view to it. And that is, from the perspective of the leadership of this organization, your thoughts today, as well as documents that you've approved in the past, what is the saying about the vision of the community that you, as an organization, have? And I still think that that, as a standalone piece, has a lot of value, since you are the leaders of this organization. What we're now talking about is how do we enlarge the voices that are coming to you by building in processes to this, to this total process that allow you to hear residents, allow you to hear from other stakeholders as well? And so I've laid out a couple of different approaches here that you can take, and they're different in terms of how they would be accomplished. First, as far as residents, I'm suggesting that we have some in-person sessions with them, what I call guided listening sessions, which will follow a general protocol. These are the kinds of questions we would like you to focus on, depending on how many people show up. We might break up into small groups, it could be done as a single group if there aren't very many people at any given session. You know, that's a matter, we have to play that by ear, depending on how many people show up. But the whole idea is to walk folks through conversations that they have with themselves to identify where did they see South Haven going in the future? And one of the things that we did not, that I did not do when I interviewed you, but that I think is important when we have these conversations with the citizens, is to say, all right, if we get to the actual implementation stage, what do you think are some of the things that city government needs to be thinking about, or the community needs to be thinking about doing to kind of move you toward that vision you have of where the South Haven of the future is going to be? The approach with stakeholder organizations is different. It's more like what I did with all of you through that interview process, and then there is that collective gathering at the end where we kind of review and get everybody together. My reason for doing that is that it's likely that you will have different, very different perspectives from different organizations, depending on the nature of the organization, their history in the community, where they see their role in the larger community. In terms of the point that you raised, Mayor, about your decision as to whether you should have six sessions or three sessions with residents, I originally started out with six, figuring two in each of your three wards, providing ample opportunities for people to get together. As I was driving over, and I made this comment to the city manager before the meeting this evening, if I were you, I'd recommend that we start with three. If it turns out that that doesn't look like that's enough, people say, I can't go to this session, I'm really interested, is there an opportunity for another session later on? We add on more later on. And so you can kind of, you don't have to, in my view, have the authorization maybe to go up to six, but start with three. If that looks like that's going to be enough, and because we're going to be coordinating with council members in each of the wards, hoping that they'll be in attendance, there will be folks who will be able to drive that decision besides me, or besides the city manager in terms of, do we need more sessions? The whole idea is, let's make, in my view, let's make sure we have, if we're going to do this, let's make sure we have enough opportunity for people to have their voices heard, where they feel that they have had a good, a good chance to do that. And then one other element of this that I added in here, and there's no cost for this, is we're going to have an asynchronous way of doing this as well. I'll put together a video, we'll provide a way for people to access that, that will guide people through on an individual basis to answer these very same kinds of questions and have them email their responses out. And again, I was thinking a little bit more about the easiest way to do this as I was driving over this evening. You want to do that one, because I'm not charging you for it. I've never done something like this. This is an easy one. But I think that it's an important option to make available, because there are people who, no matter how many sessions you have, it's not going to be convenient for them. Or, in some instances, there are folks who just aren't comfortable showing up to a meeting with their neighbors. And so we want to give them another opportunity as well. Let me stop there. I think that that gives you maybe more of an overview than any of you actually wanted to get. I've been accused on more than one occasion of making council meetings last longer than they needed to, just because I kept talking. But let me stop there and answer any questions that you may have, Your Honor.
Um, I'd say, well, so if I heard you correctly, three would be your recommendation. So I've got a cheat sheet with math up here. Three-person with the video stakeholder, 6,600, is that your math as well?
Yes.
Okay. So that one would be 6,600, if, I mean, if there's interest. Any questions, though, on what was recommended as far as a stakeholder? Joe?
I understand the in-person listening sessions. I'm a little bit not as clear on stakeholder organizations. So can you give me a couple of examples? Or maybe it's better for Kate to say what she would recommend, what organizations? Because I'm just thinking out loud, the senior services and the people there would be very different than the boys' club, maybe the people working at boys' clubs. So how do you pick the organization so they're representative of the community?
One of the things that, one of the questions that was posed to all of you was, who are the movers and shakers in this community? And there were a number of, there were a number of specific organizations that were noted in that conversation, and in response to that question. And then there were some general categories as well. So I would expect some of these are going to be fairly, you know, ones you're going to, that would be on anybody's list. So the Chamber of Commerce, the Convention and Visitor Bureau. But there were another, there were other organizations that are unique to your community in terms of what you saw as influential in terms of the future of the community. So the Ministerial Association is an example. What I would do is to work with Kate and say, all right, who are, you know, and I have based this on 10 different organizations. So I would say, all right, let's come up with a list of 10 diverse organizations in the community. I don't know your community, but you and, excuse me, you and she do. And so it's really your call as to who do you think are going to be the most important diverse voices in the community to give that overall perspective?
How do you propose to separate all the email data gathering that you want to do with this free video, and how are you going to identify the people that are sending any of the emails, by address, or?
I would do it by address. That's, that's an important question, because my expectation is that if this community is like a number of other communities where I've worked, not everybody knows where the city limits lines are, and people who live outside the city limits nevertheless have a, wish to have some kind of input oftentimes in terms of what the city is thinking about doing. And so I think it's important to have names and addresses to be able to identify where folks are located.
And that would be included in your reporting?
That's included in the reporting.
And at the very end, you got the preliminary report revision and presentation?
That's correct. And that-
Turn that into a final report?
Right. Now, I've already been here once to present a preliminary report. I've already been here once to present a preliminary report to you. That obviously would need to be revised based on the additional input. And then you've already approved an agreement with me that called for preparing a final report, once we've gotten all the input in, and particularly concerning your responses to the preliminary report. And so that, that's already planned for. There's no additional cost for that. That's already included in the, in the amount that was originally approved for the work that I have already done to date.
Well, it would be my vision to have the three in-person listening sessions and have whatever stakeholders are in those separate wards attend those sessions. So get rid of the stakeholder and do the three in-person. That's my feelings.
And you can do that. I mean, that's, you know, an approach to that, should you decide to go that way, is to make sure that you identify representatives from the stakeholder organizations that, that you want to specifically reach out to. And that's, again, I think, an important part of how you approach this is, and this is we're working with each of you in, as representatives of specific wards, to say, whom should we be making sure we're hearing from in order to get that, that diverse input? That's your call. It's your money. You can decide to approach it any way that you wish to do it. I'm happy to handle it any way you want it. I just wanted to make sure you had options here that were in front of you.
Anybody else? Thoughts, comments?
I just wanted to say thank you for making an effort, like a special focus, on reaching out to groups that might be seen as marginalized in our community. It'd be really great to hear from them and have them feel like they're a part of this process. So thank you for focusing on that.
Right. And that's, you've already acknowledged the importance of that, and it's clear from my interviews with you that that's of concern to a number of you that sit here, that sometimes those voices are not being heard. I think it's one of the challenges we face in local government, is that oftentimes the people who sit here are not representative of the, not as representative of the broader community in terms of race, or ethnicity, or economic status. And so it's very, very important, then, if you really want to have that overall perspective of the community, that you, and you have to make an effort to reach out to those folks, because they're marginalized, they're not used to people wanting to include them.
I appreciate it, too. And I do feel, just hearing your description of that stakeholder process, that sounds like you're going to do a little more of a deep dive than you would if they were coming to one of these meetings, obviously. So it sounds like we could get some good information. So I guess I would tend to keep that in there at this point in time, based on what you're saying. So.
Another alternative. And again, you know, I worked in local government for more than 40 years. I'm used to trying to be, and I'm as frugal as they come with, you know, with how the public dollars are being spent. You can always add that on. You go to the, if you hold the listening sessions, you don't feel that you've gotten enough input, you can always backtrack again and do this other piece. These are all, these are, these are planned as standalone items.
Okay.
And so, you know, if you can do it, and you do three sessions, and you feel that you've gotten a good perspective, then stop there. Don't spend any more money. But if you feel you haven't, then you know what these prices are. And now, like I say, they're priced so they stand alone. If you don't feel three is enough to get to six, you add another $2,000. If you need the stakeholder piece of it, you add that on as well.
All right, you're making it easy on us. Okay. Perfect. So you had a motion for, based on what we just heard?
I'd make a motion for a three-person listening session, analyzing and reporting, the video, email, data gathering. Let's include the stakeholder with the understanding that we may be able to flesh that out in our three meetings, and then the preliminary report revised and presented.
For the, for that amount?
Oh, I thought we were doing this.
What's your call?
That's the motion I would like to make, how's that?
Okay. So you're keeping it in. He's going to keep the stakeholder analysis in?
With, yeah, with the idea that we might not use it.
I'll second that.
Okay. So you've got a motion or a second. And so again, it's there, but if we don't need it, we will, that way you've got the, kind of, the authority to call it in if we feel we need it, and if not, we won't spend the money. That sounds fair. Public questions or discussion? Come on up. Just state your name, address.
Hi, Nancy Natt, 125 Alkenberg. So break it down, then, if we're going to do just the three sessions-
Three sessions.
-without the, what's that called, where the groups-
The stakeholder.
Yeah.
Yep.
So without the stakeholders, how much is it going to be?
Uh, well-
$3,000.
$3,975.
So then if we opt to then have the stakeholders, it's 63?
About 6,600.
6,600, yep.
About 66.
Okay. That's my call.
Danielle Beenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. And it strikes me that perhaps there would be value of having the stakeholders meeting with the citizens, so that we also get to know one another and build community. I don't know who these stakeholders are, and maybe I see a name, but if I can put a face to that, then I'm going to maybe utilize their services going forward. They're going to know who their constituents are, and I just think that there's value in holding together sessions. Aren't we all trying to build community?
Thanks.
Welcome to 11th and D.M.A. Street. My only concern is, I'm not hearing anything from, from the presentation in regards to how you're going to get a cross voice of diversity. What avenue are you going to use? Or the gentleman mentioned about influential peoples or groups, like ministerial alliances? That didn't come across good to me. You just wiped out a whole group of other people that are not a part of that ministerial alliance. So how are you going to reach out and grab that group? So I'm still kind of wondering how you're going to get, besides those three meetings, keep in mind, there's a group of community people- in mind, there's a group of community people that just don't come. How are you gonna do? What, what steps, what, what avenues are you gonna take to try to gather that information as well? Just hearing, going to the stakeholders and minister alliance, there are African-American leaders in this community that's not a part of the minister alliance. So that's all a little disturbing to hear. Unless we can come up with a, to express, how are you gonna get all this information? That would include everybody.
Appreciate it. And that's, that's one of our goals as ward representatives, we'll be reaching out. There's a variety of different channels, and obviously we discussed the possible video being created as well. So that's really, I mean, it starts here. We'll make sure you know, and we'll make sure everyone knows, to get the word out. And there's really no, no reason everyone can't come. We have, each ward will have a meeting, so it's up to all of us to get the word out and get people to come. So, good evening.
Good evening. Mary Hasley, 726 Norser Drive. I submitted written responses, and I can tell you guys received it because I, I, you've, you've done some things I've asked. Hopefully we're just aligned, which is good. So I'm glad to see the menu option. I'm glad to see the back off of the six sessions. I appreciate other people's comments aligned with mine with incorporating the stakeholders into the general sessions. I again agree with Danny that I think incorporating them in with our group, with the community as a general, will increase our cohesiveness as opposed to having separate groups that separate us. And that's kind of contrary to the whole purpose of this. With regard to the meetings, as opposed to per ward, I appreciate that, but with our community being less than 4,000 people, I would hope that they would be three general meetings, that anybody in any ward would be invited to, not just a specific ward. It doesn't matter where we live. The, the city's pretty small. What happens on the south side affects the north side and vice versa. We have different issues in each area, but I think our concerns span the whole breadth of our community. And it would be beneficial, I think, if we met as a whole as opposed to per ward. For the, again, with the stakeholders, I think several people in the community who are movers and shakers wear several hats. And so I think it would be very beneficial, again, to incorporate them into the general meetings and not have them as a standalone. Also, if you feel like there isn't enough, you can reach out to them and make sure they are aware of these meetings and that they can attend. And you can attend more than one. For outreach in general, it would be helpful to get timelines right away when those meetings would be done. We're approaching the summer season. We're going to be having events where there are going to probably be different people oriented to attend different ones. And you can definitely increase outreach that way. Thank you very much for your consideration, and I do not support at this point in time doing stakeholders, and I hope you only do that as a last resort. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else? Alright, we've got a motion, we've got a second. And at this point in time, we've got the three sessions, the video stakeholders in there, with the thought if we don't need it, it can be removed, and the report and revision. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? It's approved. Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
And with your permission, I will leave the meeting and, and let you get on with the rest of the business.
I would, I would go while you can. Absolutely.
Thank you again.
Have a good night. Thank you. Alright, next. City Council, we ask to consider approval of the 2022 Beach Safety Agreement with the South Haven Area Emergency Services to operate the beach flag notification system from May the 15th, coming up, through September the 15th, 2022. And there's a revised amount, I think, we've caught several of you, $45,095.19. I'll have Kate explain that in a second. So I don't know if you want to explain, and then we can get that motion, if that would make everybody happy, we'll just, let me explain why we got to that amount, and then we'll-
Thank you. When talking with Executive Director Brandon Hens, we were looking at doing an eight-man team, one for each beach. And when we, when we started looking at the applicant pool, we decided the eight was probably too ambitious, so we're gonna go back down to the four-person team. So that's the, the reason from the $80,000 to the $45,000.
Okay. So how about, and then we have Brandon here too. Well, you want a motion, second, then, then we'll get further discussion on the plan. How's that sound?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 Beach Safety Agreement with South Haven Area Emergency Services to operate the beach flag notification system from May 15th through September 15th for the revised amount.
Second.
Alright, motion second. Want to go into more detail? Let's talk about how it's gonna happen, and obviously there's beach safety as opposed to code enforcement, all those concepts.
Sure. So as part of our Marty Jordan safety, beach safety plan, we have 14, 14 flag poles that we display the wave conditions at the time. And what we do is we work with chays to monitor those conditions and then change them as conditions warrant. The agreement is, sets out times of the day that at least they will be reviewed, if not, you know, sooner, depending on the conditions. Also, what we wanted to do is look at adding additional duties on there. Last year, we had a very successful year with more education. A lot of the people that they were working with were going out, handing out pamphlets, talking about water safety, and we had a very successful year down there with no rescues. We are asking chays to keep their people down on the beach, and we're also asking them to be aware of maybe of any potential code violations. And should they see any, they can call in for our code enforcement officers and/or police department to come down and to rectify those. So it's a way to maximize the eyes that are already on the beach to add another layer of protection. I should stress that they'll be taking care of the beach flags, the pier throw devices, and any other safety devices we, we add down there. But their primary job duties will be to handle the beach safety flags, so these will be incidental to those, those duties. But we thought, they're down there, let's add, let's add on to them.
Okay. Perfect. Very, very important program. Any comments, Brandon? Want to say anything? Brandon Hens, everybody, who, who's responsible for keeping all of us safe every single day? And I appreciate your keeping me safe every day.
Yes. Just to kind of echo what Kate had said, we, we were a little ambitious with our eight-person program. We thought, well, it's the fire department, everybody's, wants to come work for us. We, we did get some good applicants, and we do have the schedule filled for this year from May 15th to September 15th, even though we only have two full-time, part-time that applied and are going to be employed by us. We have re, two or three returning members that agreed to come back and, and fill in a shift here and there. We've already got them on the schedule and ready to go. And like Kate had mentioned, our, our main focus, I mean, aside from the beach flags and, and that, will be just to stay down and just educate. So, and, and make sure our NICS alert get put out, and, and I think it's gonna be another good season. Excited for it. We have some really good people that are gonna be doing it, so.
That's great. Those NICS alerts are amazing, so, okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
For Mr. Hens?
Sorry.
In the past previous years, the, the guys running back and forth on the ATV, would they come back to the station and, and do other things? And then this year, they're focusing more on staying down there?
Yeah, they, uh-
This year?
Yeah.
Is that the contrast or the difference more so this year?
Kinda. Last year, we, we asked them to just make a presence down there a little more often, and, and just educate and hand out our pamphlets that we'd had made up. And, and this year, we're gonna focus on that a little bit more. And we've let them know, hey, you know, if it's a green flag day and there's not a lot shaking, you can come back to the station for a little bit, help out a little bit here and there, if, you know, as we need. And they'll also get around and flush some hydrants for us in the summertime. But for the main, I'd say for the most part, we want them to just kind of stay on the beaches and maybe bounce back and forth between the south beach and north beach. And then all the smaller beaches, you know, further up the north side there. And, and just to educate, show a presence, and if, if it's bad weather, if it's a red flag day and raining there, so we have a, a couple other vehicles that they can take down there instead to stay out of the weather, but.
So just to be clear, in, on a green flag day and nothing's much happened, what are they coming back to the station and doing? And that, and is that something that's included in this contract, or is that?
Yeah, a lot of times they'll come back, and we'll go over all the equipment, make sure that everything, inspect all the flags, make sure if there's any that have any tears. You know, we, we just kind of have them keep inventory of that stuff. We don't try to give them a lot of busy work, just, just to keep them busy. If, if there isn't anything to do, we'll just ask them to head back out. And our main, I'd say, out of their work shift, the seven or eight-hour work shift, 70% we'd prefer them just to stay down at the beaches.
Down at the beach and educate.
Yeah. Yep.
So would I. Thanks.
Yeah. Yep.
Exactly.
Question. In there, when I read this, it said that you'll be present on the beaches and looking for violations. It's a hot issue with a lot of residents. It's one thing to have all these rules, regulations, another thing to enforce them. So it sounded like from reading this, you're gonna make sure it's enforced. And it said somewhere in there, code enforcement or, and/or call the police. So give us some idea, how many hours somebody will be actually walking the beaches? Because I don't, I don't see it very often, anybody walking up and down the beaches. So is there gonna be more of that this year, where somebody will actually be on the beach? And if so, out of an eight-hour workday, will it be an hour, five hours, or all eight hours are on the beach?
I'd say a good amount. I mean, if, if they're between checking all the flags, because it takes, I think, about an hour to put all the flags up from the, all the way on the north side, all the way to the south side. And we've asked them in the past to just, once they get them all set up, to just kind of follow back to the north side. And then if everything looks good, if they want to take a quick break or come back to the station to get something to eat or to take a quick break, then we just kind of ask them to go back out. And if they're not walking, and we've asked them, and then also the pier inspections, or the throw bag inspections on the pier. So I'd say out of their seven or eight-hour shift, I'd, I'd hope that they're down there, I'd say 80% of the time, you know, three, at least four or five hours a day.
And how, give me some idea, how many people on the north side and the south side, there's two fairly large beaches to cover? Is there one person, 10 people, 20? I have no idea.
We'll have one person, one, one beach flag attendant. And then their responsibility as far as code enforcement would be, we've, I've talked to Kate a little bit about it, what will likely happen is they'll either have a code enforcement officials, either phone number, or they would have radios, either VHF or digital, that they can contact the code enforcement, or go direct with our information center, which might be easiest because then they'll know who's working that day, code enforcement-wise. Hey, could you have somebody run down here? We have a problem with this or that. And then they would pass it on to the code enforcement official and then move on to their other duties and-
To me, and I don't know this for certain, one person on two beaches, they could miss a lot. I mean, a lot can go on, and people can even watch when they come and go. Up, he's gone, he won't be back for another hour because he's gotta walk the whole beach. It's just a concern I would have. And I, I grew up in New Jersey beaches where there was a lot of enforcement. Second thing, somewhere in the write-up that I read, it says, on busy weekends, busy days, you can charge a city more. So my question would be, on slow weekends, slow days, do we get a refund?
They've always got to be ready. And I, I, you're pretty much always gonna have to have their mother-
If you're gonna have a contract for a certain amount, that's what you're gonna pay. So if it's a busy summer, I don't think we should get charged more. That's me as a taxpayer.
Sure, I understand that. I think this is for unusual and unanticipated costs that are not in this. So if we have an, an incident down there and we need more people, and they need to charge that to this program, that's what this is to be covered. There are, this amount is, you know, the amounts that have been quoted for the entire summer for the four people based on the staffing levels in this agreement. We're talking about exigent circumstances for things that are not even foreseen.
So as the write-up said, if it's a holiday, that really doesn't warrant us getting charged more. It's if there's some really big incident that you had to have a lot more people.
That's correct.
I, I even think, what, what it might be referring to, almost like last year, after September 15th, I think we had a couple really nice weekends coming up where we knew it was gonna be busy. So we, we continued the program on for another two weeks. And I wonder if that's likely what it's referring to.
That, that as well.
Yeah, we've, we've in the past, on, on holiday weekends, we've actually had chays employees go out as well, just to bolster up enforcement a little bit, so. And we don't ask for anything more for that, but I, I'd almost bet you that's probably what it's referring to is, is the extra.
And if you could give me an idea, because I saw one resident gave some numbers, how much of an increase is it over last year? Or are they doing it so different this year that it can't compare the two?
Oh, numbers-wise?
Percentage-wise increase in the cost.
Percentage-wise, we added a little bit more. We actually, our workman's comp carrier dinged us a little bit. I, I didn't take that into account when I gave a number last year.
Would you say 10, 20, 30, 50?
I would say, I think we had an increase of $4,000 to $5,000 for workman's comp. Because we-
So that's 5% then?
Yeah. We, we had a, we had probably four or five fill-in people last year, and each one of those counted toward workman's comp coverage, and, and we got the bill. It's like, kind of surprised me, but.
Thanks. We also had just a raise, we just raised seasonal rates just a couple meetings ago. I mean, just to be, just to get people. Because as we know, we, you know, you're competing with-
Yeah.
Everybody their brother, it's 16 bucks an hour pretty much every place. So we, you know, just to raise rates to be competitive. So that's out there as well. In addition, this year, we have gates eventually that they're gonna have to get managed, as well as some new rules about red flags. And so there will be, there's additional duties.
That's, that's correct. We have the new ordinance where, you know, with red flags, there could be a pen, there is a penalty for people being in the water as well as if the pier is closed. And again, we're keeping that pressure on the Corps of Engineers to get our, our, our agreement processed. So we're waiting on them too.
Right. And I know this isn't, this isn't falling you, but I mean, eventually we could share just, I mean, I know we're putting additional resources at code enforcement as we try to staff that up as well.
That's correct. So this, as, as we mentioned, this was, we were trying to get to eight people, but the staffing's just not coming in, even though we have been, you know, raising our wages to be more competitive. This is one more thing we're trying to add, to add more enforcement on the beaches, code enforcement. We're hoping to hire five individuals who can do parking and code enforcement because those folks are sworn in and can issue a code enforcement ticket or civil infraction. So we're trying to add in all these elements and weave them in together.
Sounds good. I know as we're doing education, it might be nice to a lot of folks. I'm still amazed, number of folks that don't know, like Pilgrim Havens, a dog beach, take your dog there. I'd be, you know, just, here, here's the map to get to the next place. So, alright. Any other?
I have a question.
Yeah.
If there's an incident, like a water safety thing, when one of these flag personnel are down on the beach, would they be like first to respond to that? Is that part of their?
No, they're, they're not allowed to enter the water.
Okay.
If, once we, once we put them through the training, one of the things we, we also ask them to go through our water safety training, just so they're familiar with how we operate. And they can also be support for, for the, for the rescue crews that come down. We did that last year when we did our, our annual training, and it worked out great. Thankfully, we didn't have, we didn't have to use them. But we do involve them in anything that we're training on, but mostly so they can understand how we're operating. If, you know, hey, can you run, go grab me this kind of thing? Mostly a support if we do have an incident down there.
Okay. And then I have us also wondering how often the flags will be changed out?
They get put up by nine every day, and then taken down by nine as, as the year, as the days get a little bit shorter, maybe a little bit earlier in the day. But every three hours, they get reevaluated. So at nine, 12, 3, 6, and, and then again at nine.
Okay. Thanks.
George?
Yeah, I think you may have already answered this question, but as far as some of the smaller beaches, like say Nukem Beach, so there will be some kind of a, a part-time presence there, probably not as much as, as some of the larger beaches. And then the, another question is, like I noticed at the north beach, there's a camera another question is, like, I noticed at the north beach, there's a camera there. Is, does anyone monitor that as, as another way of kind of monitoring what's going on at the beach?
Yes, yes, we have, our information center has access to all the monitored cameras, or all the cameras that we have at the beaches. We also have a, a screen at the station that's kind of in our computer area, where we'll monitor the, all the different camera angles that the IT department has set up. And it works out well. We've actually caught some things on there where it's, you know, maybe the person down on the beach didn't see, they just weren't far enough back kind of thing. But, yeah, they're monitored by television or by the cameras in a couple of different spots. And our, our IC is actually pretty, pretty good at that. We've, they've mentioned a few things before. So, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Hmm?
Um, if, I don't know if this is a thing where it would go from green to red, or when it goes from yellow to red, if it's not within, you know, that three hour interval, interval. But are you guys aware of the changing conditions? But you, would you be able to at any point change them quicker?
Yes.
If it turns to red flag?
Yeah, yeah, we're, they're very, that all, along with the monitoring on the television, if there is, if, if we know the forecast might be a little tumultuous later in the day, we'll kind of, hey, just kind of keep an eye on the water.
Okay.
And see if anything changes. So a little, a little bit of an added heads up. And as they're going back, and, and we're usually pretty proactive. I don't, I've, we've always given them the latitude to, if you think it's, if you think it needs to bump it up, bump it up. I don't, I don't so much like to take them down a notch, because I, we, we go by NOAA recommendations every day.
Mm-hmm.
And they do update, I think, at six hour intervals, if I remember right. But we usually are pretty proactive on getting them changed if they need to get changed.
Okay.
And like I said, I, we tend to err on the side of caution. If we think it's a little too rough, you know, if NOAA is saying it's a green, but we think it's a little rougher than that, we'll, we'll throw a yellow flag up just to, just to be safe.
Okay, thank you.
Good plan. Anything else? If not, let's get some public, we've got a motion, we've got a second, need a public comment. I'll let you jump aside. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're almost done. They need to go home.
Hi again. Nancy Nat 125, Elkenburg. Open water swimmers might get in at the blue stairs and swim to the pier and back, back and forth. I do that. The last summer I was here, you might start out with a green flag at the blue stairs, and it may be yellow or maybe even red. And I just am wondering, is there going to be consistency in the colors so that if I'm out in the water and I'm in an area where I shouldn't be, am I going to get ticketed because I wasn't aware of the change in the colors of the flag? Does that make sense of what I'm saying?
It, it does. I don't, if you want to make a.
Well, I know, I've, I've done open water swimming also, and I know you can have different colored flags closer to the piers.
Right.
So if I'm going to do an open water swim, I will, I will look at the map and I will check the flags all along the route that I'm going to go.
Before you get in.
And if they're different, I know that, well, if there's any yellow flag out, I probably won't go. But, but yeah, you can, you can look at all the flags at one time on the website.
Okay. I guess, I wasn't here last summer, so I didn't know how the website worked. And the hours that they're going to be posted, it starts at nine AM?
Yes, they have to have the, the flags up by nine AM.
Okay. And then what is the violation? If you're, if you get a violation, is it a thousand dollars regardless of what you're violated for?
Well, if it's, if a red flag is posted and you, and you enter the water after that red flag has been posted, you, you could be facing a thousand dollar fine.
Okay. But it, it can vary based on what the violation is, or is this just a straight red flag thing?
It's red flags.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Erin Hasley, seven twenty-six, North Shore Drive. I applaud Shays for everything they've done. Last year was a fantastic record, and it appears that really this year is the similar as last year. And it now appears that the cost has been lowered to forty-five or so K versus the eighty that was published. So that helps understand things a bit more. My concern is not with Shays, but with the code enforcement agents. So what I continually say is if we don't, do not have the agents, the code enforcement agents, then it does not matter how many people are viewing if there's nobody to respond. And if there's nobody to respond, then that really puts Shays, the Shays personnel in a predicament that could be volatile. Because they're trying to make someone safe. They have no authority to make someone safe. All they can do is call someone who has the authority to make someone safe. And someone who can do, who has that authority, may not be able to get there right away. So I just, I don't know if it's a cart before the horse, but again, I appreciate everything they're doing. I just feel that the request that the city is putting on them has the potential to put their employees in harm's way when they are being asked to look for code violations, are not able to enforce the code violations. And we have no guarantee that there will be someone in the immediate vicinity to respond in a timely manner to enforce the code violation. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We've got a motion. We've got a second. To renew the 2022 Shays Beach Safety Agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posen, no, it's approved. Thanks, Brandon. Have a good night. Appreciate it. All right. Boom ba-dun. Oh, fun stuff. Here we go. City Council will be asked to take the following actions regarding donations of art installations. First, to consider approval of the proposed location of a sculpture in Riverfront Park, which, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to, for the City Council to approve the proposed location of a sculpture at Riverfront Park.
Second? All right, we've got a motion. We've got a second. Kate's here, Scott's out. Hello, Scott. You going to share too? He can come on up too. This is great stuff. So hopefully everyone's seen this photo of what's going to be coming our way. So we love all the art around town. So, good evening. Tell us what we're going to be looking at.
Good evening. I'm Scott Reinert. I retired last May as the Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau here in South Haven. But I'm still active with the Bureau as a consultant, working on fun projects like this. We've kind of referred to those as community enhancement projects. So, so we started really in 2019 with the whole Trail Town designation. The CBB kind of led that effort, and we were one of the first four cities and communities in the state of Michigan that were awarded that designation. So all the signage and the Harbor Walk and all that stuff that you see around town, we've done that over the last couple of years, which has been great. So this is something that, that we see, the fish sculpture is something, kind of a, the first phase of a bigger project that we'd like to get, be, become engaged with. So this is an idea that we had, which was consistent with the city, what we've done around, different sculptures around downtown and so forth. The artist, Lou Rodriguez, is very familiar with South Haven. He's done a lot of work. The large hummingbird that you see in front of Clementine's, Lou did that work. And as a matter of fact, when we started talking to Lou, he had done a similar concept to this fish sculpture for Art Prize, as an entry to Art Prize in Grand Rapids. And so that's where we kind of got the concept. And he's also done very large octopus that kids can sit on and stuff in, in Grand Rapids as well for Art Prize. So very familiar with doing large scale kinds of things. So anyway, we talked to Lou and came up with the idea to do kind of an interactive photo opportunity, if you will. So this is a large fish. The platform will be seven foot by four foot in size, a steel frame, if you will, steel plate that will sit on a concrete base. We met with the Parks Commission. There was some concern about putting it in a green space. We found a nice spot down by the splash pad, which is not used right now. It's kind of a sand area, if you will. So the intent would be, it would be placed there. It will face, looking out over the channel, and kind of a fun, really interactive design that celebrates not only the sculptures that we've got in town, but also the heritage of fishing and commercial fishing in South Haven and stuff. So we think it'll be a nice thing, a nice fun photo opportunity. It basically says that the fish, it's a fishing pole that attaches to the fish, and it says it was caught in South Haven, Michigan. And so folks can grab the fishing pole and get their picture taken. And we think it'll be kind of a fun thing that, that will allow people to have a little, a little fun with that. So that's the first phase. Just a quick note on the second phase. The City, Griffin, and Sue Brock, and the Center for the Arts, and the Visitors Bureau formed a little committee over the past couple of months here, and we have engaged four artists around the country to come up with design concepts for large public sculpture, way, place making opportunities in South Haven. So you'll be hearing more about that in the future. If we've got some ideas that we think could be fun, could have merit, and could fit well with our community, we'll be coming back with that as well. And that effort is funded, and any sculptures that result from that will be funded by the CBB and gifted to the city. And so, and that's the case. This fish sculpture is about ten thousand dollars. The CBB is picking up that cost, and we'll donate, gift that to the city then. So.
Which is amazing and very generous, and I love all the art we're having placed around town. So it's very cool. Any questions for this group? We can, let's get some public comments too, but go ahead.
I just want to thank you. I think it's great downtown. I've seen other big cities, and I think ours is as good as any of them.
Yeah.
I think the one in front of Clementine, the one right down just east of the bakery, looks beautiful. And people comment about them all the time. So I'm looking forward to them.
Great. And the one, the one note that I wanted to make too, is that Lou is very, very familiar with the, the concept of safety, and that kids are going to be crawling over it and stuff. And so there'll be no sharp edges, everything is rounded, everything will be touchable, if you will. So there'll be no, no safety concerns with that. So feel very comfortable.
Also just want to give a shout out to you, to Jen, to the Visitors Bureau, because not all Visitors bureaus reinvest in their community like we're seeing you do here in this town. So just.
Thank you.
Kudos. So it's nice to see all that different investment. And I know last Friday, I participated in an event, but I'll share that later. But all wonderful. So anybody else's questions? How about any public questions or comments? Nope, everybody loves it. Perfect. Let's go. We've got a motion, we've got a second to approve that, the first one, the placement of the art. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posen, no, it's approved. Wonderful. And next, we're going to consider the approval of the proposed sesquicentennial trail in Stanley Johnson Park.
I make a motion to approve the proposed sesquicentennial trail in Stanley Johnson Park.
Second? All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. That is tricky, isn't it?
Okay.
Scott!
Back again. So this is something that we put together in 2019 as part of our hundred and fifty year celebration. Obviously, with COVID and everything we're going through, we kind of got pushed back. But CD leadership, the CBB, and the Historical Association, as part of all those things, we, we thought it would be cool to commemorate what we, what we've, have gone through as a community and kind of the history of the community. And so this is a reflection of that. So we've got, we engaged a local artist, again, who, Kayla Wazinski, who's done a ton of work around town, the murals that you see on the side of the walls, she's done a good, good portion of those. So we engaged her to come up with original artwork that, that would depict the history of South Haven. And so we met over the course of several months and kind of, you know, worked through the themes that we wanted to capture. And from that, she took and created original artwork. And so we've digitalized those. And so the intent would be that this would be installed in Stanley Johnson Park. And there was some concern, again, from the Parks Commission, about the placement of those. The intent is to install those in a very, in an identical manner as what we've done with the Harbor Walk. So if you've been around the harbor, there's steel pedestals that are placed on a concrete pad, and they're two foot by three foot in, in size. And they hold up very, very well. We've had no issues at all in the last couple of years with our Harbor Walk panels. So, so they, same design, same materials, all those kinds of things. So, and then with the artwork, the CBB staff put together the, the wording, the verbiage that goes, and you see those in your, in your packets. And so we met as a, as a group between the Historical Association, city staff, as well as representatives from all the festivals and the Boy Scout group and stuff, to make sure that where we place these pedestals would not conflict with any activities that go on in Stanley Johnson Park. So basically, what we're going to do is we're going to start right across the street from the Maritime Museum, where the sidewalk kind of goes back up to the west, down below Stanley Johnson Park, so down Black River Street, and across that wooden platform that we have, wooden boardwalk that we have, and then up the stairs, and then back to Dyke Men Road, if you will, across the top of the hill. And so there's telephone poles there that, that are powered from above. We think putting the pedestals there will protect them and, you know, it won't provide a hazard in terms of anyone driving or parking cars for festivals and stuff. And so we just think it'll be a nice addition. There's eleven panels. Again, the cost of the project, we anticipate being twenty thousand dollars. That cost will be paid for by the CBB and gifted to the city as well. So it will be branded, the Trail Town, Pure Michigan Trail Town, Historical Associate, Historical Association Sesquicentennial Trail. And so there'll be two big signs that say that, that are exactly the same as our other Trail Town signs. And, and it would be branded that way. So we just think it'd be a nice addition. When they're all installed, hopefully we'll have some kind of a ribbon cutting so we can kind of celebrate that as a community as well. So we think it's a nice way to, to kind of honor the hundred and fifty year celebration and also the, the history of our community.
It is very cool. And the, the ones you proposed are quite impressive. And so, okay, by a show of hands, how many people out in the audience have walked the Harbor Walk?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Got a fair number. All right, good. So now you have something new to walk.
That's right.
For those of you that haven't, you should walk it. It's worth a walk. It's a great, a lot of good information out there.
Yeah, there is. Excellent.
And I appreciate your, again, he's been to a lot of meetings, taken a lot of feedback, went back to our suggestion, we were talking about it, and I appreciate, even the one about the Boy Scouts, that was no joke, because we park cars up there for the Boy Scouts, for the art festivals, and there's, we need every extra space to wiggle cars in there. So I appreciate, these look amazing, and I appreciate your, again, the work going into there. Questions of this group?
Um, so you're saying they won't be along the walking path that's at the top of the park, and that kind of green space will be.
Yeah, so it'll be, we initially proposed kind of that two-track that runs right through the center of the park. We had proposed putting some in there, and the concern was not only from a safety with parking and stuff, but also kids playing ball or whatever might stumble into. So literally, it will be right up on top of the hill. So it's going to go kind of down the bottom of the hill, if you will, on the sidewalk, go up the stairs there, and then right back at the top of the hill. So the very crest of the hill, it'll come. So it'll be far away from the walking path and stuff that goes through the park. Yeah.
Yeah, I love, I think, reading about this history is really interesting, and I love it. I was just a little concerned if it was going to be on the walking path that I would take away from some of that.
Yeah, so that was, yeah, that was, that was the feedback we received from the Parks Commission. So we, we adjusted that. And again, we had all the, all the affected parties together, and we did a walkthrough, and we literally put, put little flags in the ground where they were going to make sure we felt comfortable. So I think we got a good, good plan.
Awesome. Thank you.
A lot of good feedback. Okay, and nothing else here? Public questions or comments? Nothing. All right. Perfect. We've got a motion, a second to approve the proposed sesquicentennial trail in Stanley Johnson Park. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posen, no, it is approved. Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it. Have a great night. Thanks for all of your work. All right, City Council will be asked to consider requesting the Planning Commission to review ordinance ten seventy-two on fire pits, permanent fireplaces, and permanent barbecues, and refer, refer that back to the Planning Commission with some suggestions we're going to talk about here in a minute. So, want to talk about it first? Let's talk about it first.
Okay.
Before we make the motion, before, let's decide what we want to send back there first. So want to give us a little background and?
Sure. Very briefly, the Planning Commission had looked at making some updated, some changes to the zoning ordinance, and this is kind of coming out of the master plan, looking at barbecue pits, barbecues, fire pits, and fire, fireplaces, outdoor elements. And this had been looked at, at the Planning Commission for three months, and they came up with some recommendations that were adopted by this board, I want to say, in late summer. Since then, we have some, they went into effect, and of course, this year, we have people trying to go out and build some, some elements, but finding that the new regulations were very restrictive, and they were not able to install elements they may have done in the past, and that there is no variance, or, or there's no allowances for, say, piped in gas versus wood burning fire pits and such. So a number of the council members, as well as city staff, have received concerned emails. So we thought, based on suggestions coming from council members, to give some suggestions and have the, the Planning Commission look at this again. And I should be clear that we can't just rescind the ordinance. That would take another ordinance. So they would have to go through a public hearing at the Planning Commission. then, of course, two readings up here. So really, at this point, we'd be asking the, the council to give some suggestions, some guidance for a, for a narrowed review at the Planning Commission.
Okay. Yep, that's perfect. I know, I'm one of the people that's gotten some concerned emails and phone calls, I think Steve, maybe George, and others. So I know my specific concerns relate to piped-in gas specifically, as opposed to solid fuel, so I guess my, if I was to send it back, I would want to see that specific element looked at, relative to setbacks, lot lines, et cetera, but it's mainly piped-in gas. Fire pits, fireplaces, for sure. I still have a question about cooking and smoke. I got the two for sure. I guess I want to hear others on that. Steve?
My input to Planning Commission would be, this is definitely one that I don't think is one-size-fits-all. There's so many different lot sizes in the city, and so many different buildings and stuff in place on each lot now for the coverage and, and everything else. I think each one of these items stated in our agenda are separate, and should be probably dealt with separately in that ordinance. For example, an open fire pit's completely different than piped-in gas underneath the ground fireplace, so I want to, you know, the, the permanent one can be controlled not to burn the leaves up above the tree, where a fire pit can catch the tree on fire. So I think each individual, individual have to be handled individually as they review this. My concern is that it's something that I personally voted, voted on when it came through, and that was my mistake. So I hope that we can deal with it quickly so that the residents can get, get on with what they want to build, and maybe if we can just deal with them individually, that would be my recommendation and my input.
Anybody else? I know, George, you're on our, on the Planning Commission. Again, I, I don't have any problems with what I consider to be solid fuel. I don't, I don't, I'm not, like I said, I wouldn't recommend changing those requirements. I was mainly concerned about the piped-in gas, personally, but I guess that would, we'll take the whole as far as thought, so.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about like distances away from this and that, and I would prefer piped-in gas rather than a grill that can roll and blow over with a propane tank in it, so those, those different types of things. And I've seen several pictures where there's, it's, it's hard piped to the end of the deck, and then they got a hose going with a valve from that to the barbecue grill that's on wheels, so what happens when a big wind comes along and the hose rips off? So if they forgot to turn the valve off, we have an issue. So those are the things that concern me, and then, and then fire pits under the trees, and, and one person that's already grandfathered in, if you will, and it's 10 feet away from the house, and we're requiring it 25 feet away from the house, I think that a good review of that is warranted.
Sounds good. Joe?
I don't know enough hardly to make a decision or give an opinion. I only think that the fire department should have input on this, because they know better what is and isn't safe, so I would love to have their input on anything the Planning Commission decides, and anything that comes back to us. Because to me, there's really two big issues. First and foremost is the safety for homeowners and for the person who has the fire pit barbecue. The other one is the pollution. Now, some people say they smell it, some people says buzzers, bothers, or asthma, and it may well, very well be true, but there should be some kind of guideline for air quality that we could look at that would have an overriding decision on how we proceed. I just don't know enough to even hardly give an opinion on this. And I know a lot of people feel strongly, because they enjoy outside barbecue, and they enjoy a fire pit, and I don't want to stop that, but same, same time, I know residents who've had fires going from portable fire pits within three and four foot of their wooden fence, and that's not right, so I'm a Steve, there's no one-size-fits-all, but I would love to have the authorities, I guess the Fire Commissioner, whoever does this, give us their opinion, because I think that should be the overriding factors we look at, safety.
Well, I know when we talked about this in, in Planning Commission, this is something that came out, I believe, out of the master plan, one of the recommendations out of the master plan, and so in an effort to try to incorporate those recommendations from the master plan, we started looking at, at those things, and I, I kind of, thinking along the same lines as Joe, in that you can have sometimes, I mean, the, the ordinance is designed basically for a certain situation, but you can have, say, for example, a, a gas-fired, permanent fire situation that might be closer, but there might be no intervening combustibles that could pose a threat either to a home or any adjacent structure. So it would be nice if somehow a review could be conducted by maybe the fire marshal or something like that, that might allow exceptions to the ordinance, and I don't know if that would even be possible or not.
Could be part of the review. So it sounds like there's enough interest to send it there, so I'll take a motion, then we can finish this discussion and get some public comment.
I make a motion to request the Planning Commission review the ordinance 1072, fire pits, permanent fireplaces, permanent barbecues to, back to the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
All right, let's keep going. Was there anything else? Sorry, I just wanted to...
No.
With that comment, I thought we'll let you just send it, so. Ms. Wendy, do you have anything?
I think they all have good points, and I fully support them. I'm not an expert in this area either, but I do like the idea that Steve mentioned of breaking them out separately, because they are very different, and then of having a fire department official kind of tell us what's safe and go from there.
That was the input I was getting from people, is just that people's yards are just so varied that, and mine, for example, is very small, and so abiding by the 25 feet wouldn't be possible, so I would never be able to have anything in my backyard, and so, yeah, just, and the input I've heard from landscapers, and Steve already touched on it, that a permanent structure is going to be much safer than a portable structure that's, can be blown over in the wind, and so, yeah, it just needs to be looked at again.
And again, if we can just reach out, I know a few of the landscapers have reached out to us, we can just collaborate with them and collect the various concerns, and put it all together, and see what we come up with.
Question for staff, maybe, is there a possibility of going to a zoning board of appeals to, to, for?
Yes, anyone who needs immediate relief can...
Itwants that are in the middle of this?
Yes, not knowing how long a review could take at the Planning Commission, and we may think they do a very thorough job, but anyone needing or seeking immediate relief can always file as an application for a waiver from the ordinance.
And, and the dates for those meetings are very specific, when you have to have your information in and stuff.
That's correct. So there's some listing on our, on our website, but really, we're also, we have to file, we have to post notices, and 15-day notices, so there is about a 30-day lead time.
So is, would that be a suggestion in the meantime?
Yes, if anyone's needing immediate relief.
Catch some possible relief?
Yes, I would contact Kelly Desette at the zoning department.
Thank you.
How about any public questions or comments on, we're just referring this back to planning at this point in time, any questions about that? Good evening. If so, come on up, just state your name and address.
I'm Grace Borgfield. I live at 302 Michigan Avenue. I spoke to some of you, and some of you came to my house, so I appreciate that, and I didn't know I would have such an audience this evening, so, and I'm inviting you all to come look at our project. I'm the person who is probably a thorn in your side at this point, but my husband and I, we decided to do this project, and we're probably delayed for a couple of reasons. The, when we finally decided what to do, because safety is above, is one of our major concerns, and if anybody knows where I live, there's nothing that could catch on fire where I live. And because of that, just ordering a grill, 16 weeks, that's four months. I mean, everything just takes forever. So we missed these dates, and I didn't realize it would affect us so critically. So prior to all this, we, we came and did the zoning, the ZBA, but I was asked to hold it, so now we can't get there till June, I assume now. That's what...
I don't have those dates in front of me, but there's certain requirements by law we have to follow.
Right, so we, that we, no, we had, I, I was told to hold it, but it's not going to go through now, so it'll go through at the end of the month. So what are you looking for as the ZBA? That's my question. And if it goes back to the Planning Commission, what is the timeline for the Planning Commission? Does anybody know that?
I don't know how long it would take at the Planning Commission. They, they meet once a month on the first Thursday of the month.
Yeah.
We need to have some information to go to them. They have a meeting this Thursday, so it won't be on there, so it would be in June.
I checked that agenda, it's not on there, you're right. Okay.
They haven't sent it yet. But as for the ZBA application, there's, there's a list of criteria that has, to have to be satisfied before it can be granted, and, and Mr. Set can go over all of that with you.
Yeah.
If not, we can make an appointment with you.
Okay. And would it be in my, would it be in our advantage to have the fire department come?
I would think so.
To come? And look at our project before we enter the, go to the ZBA? Because I have a funny feeling that if, or the ZBA is our only option, because at this point, if it goes back to the Planning Commission, it's going to take months, and then it has to go three months, which would mean probably at the soonest, it would be December.
Well, I'm not really sure, but let's talk with Kelly and see what we'll need from you.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. And I invite each one of you to come look at the project. I invite, I wholeheartedly would like you to come. If you want my cell number, I'll be here after the meeting till the end, so please make an effort to come see, because I think you'll be, and I agree, one size does not fit everyone. These are small lots in the city, and we choose to live here, and we should make it harmonious for people, that be safety is, is my concern, too. So appreciate that. If you have any questions, please, I'll be here till the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I appreciate this getting sent back. It's unfortunate that it was just there less than a year ago, but I am not hearing what I think is the most offensive part, making our community not harmonious, is the mobile fire pits, mobile grills, and there being no setback requirements, and them being able to be immediately adjacent to adjacent property owners in front yards, and just not conducive to the family environment and a safe environment that we would like to get back in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And was there anybody else?
Hi, I'm Leonard Mosher, I live at 763 Center Street. And those of you who don't know me, I am a mechanical inspector for the city of Grand Rapids, and this is the first I've heard about this in the city. And I know in Grand Rapids, we deal a lot with fire pit, underground gas and everything, and I just hope that part of your planning and everything is that the proper permits are pulled with the state, because I know at South Haven, you have to go through the state mechanical office to get your permits, that the proper permit is pulled for your gas-fired appliances that you want to put out, because it's a sad thing when someone tells us and does this, and then they find out later that they don't have the proper permits, and then unfortunately, we're the ones to tell them that, sorry, you can't have it, it has to be removed. So that's one thing that safety is a biggest concern, obviously, for everything on the fire pit, especially gas. Okay?
Great, thank you. Thanks for that suggestion. All right, is there anybody else? All right, seeing none, we've got a motion, we've got a second, and send this back to planning. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, let's send it back. Everybody doing okay, you guys? Everyone good down there?
So far.
So far, so good. All right, we got to go. Next, City Council will be asked to consider the approval of the commercial use license agreements for bend yoga and barefoot weddings.
I'll make a motion to approve the commercial use license agreements for bend yoga and barefoot weddings.
Second. All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Kate?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. So we, we had a discussion at one of our previous meetings, looking at commercial use policy, and I should stress that we have had many of these events already occurring on our public spaces, but we did not have a way, we were not regulating in the way that our ordinance would require. So we came up with this commercial use policy, and this commercial use, I'm sorry, this commercial use agreement, and we have two, we've, we've also heard from your concerns at our, at our previous meeting about limiting the size and then adding more, more features in. So we think that we've, we struck a happy medium here for bend yoga as well as barefoot weddings. This would provide a non-exclusive license agreement for $150. Now, for the weddings, it would be $100 for each additional wedding, they would be limited to 50, 50 attendees, and that would be a four-hour window that they could set up the chairs and then break down after the ceremony. As for the bend yoga, I think they're also allowed up to 50 people, and we've, we've kind of identified a good area on the beach where these uses could occur. They're not necessarily going to be occurring at the same time, but this was something that we thought would be a good compromise meaning, meaning with, we, we know that lots of people go to the beach to, to enjoy the spaces. We also know that many people have been getting married on the beach. This is a way for us to kind of keep those commercial activities limited to, to a few select vendors.
Okay. Questions, comments of this group, before we do public comments, or do you want to get public first? It's quiet up here. Let's go, public questions or comments, how's that? Start there. Oops. So close.
Good evening. I'm Leslie Carpenter, and I live at 64th Street in Bangor, but I also own a business here at Cabana Cuts for 14 years. I'm just, I'm with bend yoga, and in previous years, this is about the eighth year that yoga has been offered on the beach. It's only the second year that I've been doing it, so I don't know what they did before, but it is an established business. We've had up to 50 people join, and it's awesome for the community. It's also very great for our tourists, and just something for our well-being. You know, there's a bar, and a restaurant, and breweries, and all kinds of stuff on every block, so something to, to help people stay healthy, and also just, you know, for people to come and have a, a good peace, peace of mind about what's going on, you know, especially with COVID, and being able to exercise as a community. So with that being said, I just hope that, you know, we can come to an agreement on the, on the commercial use and, but enjoy the summer as well, so I want to be able to offer that, so thank you.
Sounds good. Oh, before you run off, would you like to share a little bit, how often does your class meet and?
Well, this year I'm asking for three days. So the first day would be Wednesday mornings at 9:00 a.m., and that would be more geared towards tourist, tourists. A lot of us work during the, the week, and then Thursday evenings is our sunset flow at 7:30, and then Sundays at 9:00 a.m. So Saturday, we did Saturday and Sunday last year, and Saturday is kind of the checkout day for a lot of people, so those classes weren't as big, and also competes with the farmer's market. So, but in the morning, and the, and later in the evening, the beach isn't as crowded, so we're not taking up spaces that people are using, or there's just not a lot of people on the beach at that time of the day. So this also, I, it was myself last year, but I did hire somebody. We are 200-hour certified yoga instructors, and I hired somebody for this next year, so we now have three people, who each have a class, so we'll be offering, you know, various different types of beginner yoga, but from three of us instead of just one person, so we never have to cancel a class, and we can rely on each other to cover. And the only way we would cancel a class is if the wind speeds are above 25, or, because you can't hear, or we can't have microphones down there, so, or if it's, you know, torrential rain, tornado warning, you know, just inclement weather, so.
Sounds good.
It's $10 a person. Was also thinking about offering, you know, a full summer for people that, a discount, so they don't have to pay $10 each time for locals, you know, to come and enjoy, so thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other council questions on this one?
On a surface, it seems real simple, but it really isn't. So let's take the hard one, the weddings. I, I will never support, I mean, I take that back, I should never say never. I just can't support taking a public beach where residents and tourists come to lay on the beach, enjoy the beach, enjoy the sand, and then suddenly have a business come in with 50 people, set up tables, set up chairs, and have a formal wedding. It becomes a commercial use of our public beach, and that just seems wrong to me. And I grew up on beaches, and I've never seen that in other places. I may be wrong, but I haven't seen it. So I can't support that right now unless there's something I don't know. On yoga, that's different. You can go to hotels where they have swimming pools, and they'll have exercise classes right there. They'll have exercise classes in yoga on beaches, so that's not that unusual. And I wouldn't think there's that many people, and maybe we can even say it has to be on one side of the beach, left or right or away from the main tourists. But 9:00 AM in the morning, you're not going to bother many people, because most people don't come on the beach at 9:00. And 7:00 o'clock at night, most people are off, so it's not quite as intrusive. But directionally, I don't like running out, and that's what we're doing, running out public beaches. So I could easily be convinced to support the yoga if we limit the number of people and we keep the hours that was stated, because that shouldn't be a problem. But I just can't support having a formal wedding on a beach with 50 chairs set up. If it's a wedding party that wants to come down and have a quick ceremony, snap some pictures, and that's 10 people, that's a whole different thing than setting up chairs. That's just my opinion.
That's good, good point. Sorry, Joe, you're on the way up. I'm going to get Joe back up here, sorry, he was headed up. Sorry about that, Joe.
I'm just trying to get clarity. So is this proposal to allow weddings? To allow weddings and?
Yes.
They've, yeah, they've occurred in the past, this is trying to kind of formalize-
Yeah, they're already occurring, and now we're going to make them, we're going to make them have a license to do it.
You, you didn't.
They are already occurring, and now we're going to make them have a license to do it.
You want to make a, you want to make them have a license?
City staff is already tracking it?
Yeah, to me, that's just not right. To me, I, I just totally disagree with that. Why would you charge someone to come use the beach, to use the beach for a wedding?
It's a business, though. It's not charging individuals who wanted to get married on the beach, that'd be for businesses.
Not individuals. Not individuals, just businesses.
Right.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so if I have a couple in my church want to get married, and they want to do it on the beach, that's not considered commercial?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Correct.
My name is Lee Melchettell, address is 42 Dennis Avenue in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm actually one of the co-owners of my Barefoot Wedding, so I can try to help address some of the comments about how busy the beaches are. Firstly, I just want to say thank you so much to Kate. I was able to meet with her and Leslie from Bend Yoga, and really just kind of explain what our business is, and I just want to say thank you for how receptive you were throughout the whole conversation. Totally understand the big concern there about the crowds on the beach and being an inconvenience to other beachgoers. One of the points, I don't know, not sure how familiar people are with it, but we only offer two different times, so a morning ceremony at 10:30 AM, and then a sunset ceremony at 6:00 PM or later. For some locations, we've done it even nothing earlier than 7:00 o'clock as well, just to avoid those busy beach hours. In the past, it was 11:00 AM, but again, I just did own due diligence, wanting to show good faith with the community there. We saw that when we were done with our ceremony and everything, usually took about 45 minutes to fully pack everything up, we saw that there were starting to be a lot more people out there on the beach, so we decided to move it up from 11:00 to 10:30, just to make sure we are out of there even earlier, and to make sure that we are clearing the beach off as well. As far as profiting off of public land, we do understand that as well. Again, I'm 20, or young person, 29, I can't afford a million-dollar venue space or anything like that, so that's where the creativity came in with using public beaches and public land. However, to combat, you know, profiting off of the public land, we started our nonprofit Better Coes Foundation, where we have actually been able to work with local governments that have been patient and working with us, most notably in Grand Haven and Muskegon. Through our nonprofit, we've actually removed over 800 pounds of trash from public beaches as well. Our recent cleanup efforts took place in Grand Haven, where we had 113 volunteers that came, and we removed over 400 pounds of trash. So we do understand that we are benefiting from the public land, and we do appreciate the city for allowing us to do so in the past. However, we do understand that we do, that we have that responsibility to make sure that we leave the beach, even though it's not our trash, that we make sure we try to pick up after elders, so that way other people can come and enjoy that beach as well. Kate and I did look through the economic impact that our business has with both bed and breakfast, restaurants, tourist shops, all of that. We calculated, it was about $623,000, I think, thousand dollars that we saw the impact as well for local businesses that we support. We try to stay away from the chain businesses and all of that stuff, and we try to push more of the mom-and-pop shops. Again, just trying to support one of the local businesses. So understand, again, we're benefiting from public land, but hopefully you do see the positive impact that our business brings as well. And happy to answer any questions that you have as well, or concerns too. So, thank you.
Any other public questions? And we'll fire off some more questions over here.
Susan Montz, 210 Clinton. Would these be contracts that would be renewable yearly, or is this like an ongoing?
It would have to be renewed, this is only good, this is only valid for this year.
For a year. Okay, so if something didn't work out, or wasn't working?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. But she probably, the city probably has the ability to terminate anytime.
That's correct, there's provisions in here that both sides, there, there's ways to terminate the agreement.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I submitted comments, and I'm just going to reinforce what I had said. I'm pleased that the city has worked this agreement out with these two establishments. I think they do bring benefit to our community. I would hate to see discrimination between different businesses that benefit our community. I appreciate there are differences, but I think there's more similarities. They're both limited in size, they're both limited in hours. They have gone to great lengths to find ways to not impede the public use of the beaches by the general population, who usually shows up later in the morning. I want to just reiterate what was already said, that these establishments, especially the weddings, bring a significant import of people to our community, allows them to appreciate our natural beauty, and gives them memories that hopefully they will come back and maybe be permanent residents, and help us increase our year-round residence over all of the short-term rentals. I think that there's a benefit, and with them being renewed yearly, I think that this is a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Carson, 2177 Bourdon from Muskegon. I'm a co-owner of my Barefoot Wedding as well, and I just wanted to make one more point. I know you mentioned about areas on the beach. We did have, it is a certain area that potentially would be allowed for weddings, and we do also understand that it is all first come, first served. It is our policy never to ask somebody to move out from behind photos or anything. All of our couples are understanding that there may be other people in the photos that we're sharing these public beaches. So I just wanted to make the aware as well.
So a quick question on your times. So I just, your start time right now is 10:30?
10:30 every morning.
And it's about 45 minutes to tear down, so you're getting close to prime time. Would you be willing to work with our staff, we want to move that up a little bit earlier?
We could be willing to.
Just to look at those times, to avoid beach dweller, I'm just, you know. And then you're, you said sometimes up to 7:00 PM or later, so, okay. So Kate, we could work with that out later, once this is in place, if we want to look at those hours?
We can look at that.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, Mr. Gruber, good evening.
Hi, I was trying to read through that. Is that going to be, oh, Clark Gruber, 525 Superior Street, 102?
How soon we forget.
Sorry about that. Hey, one of the, one of the questions I had was, so this is going to be an annual license at approximately 150 per wedding, or for the summer?
100 per wedding.
It's 150 for the, for the annual year, and then it's $100 for each wedding.
Okay. And I don't know how many weddings they do approximately a year here. May I ask the individual?
Yep, go ahead. What's the number right now we have reserved?
19?
Yeah.
So 19 weddings that, I think they do 21 to $3,500 a wedding. 100 bucks is a great deal. I mean, you can't get a better business model than that. So at least we're doing something that we haven't done before. They're willing to work with the community, come in and out in the morning, you know, and it's not great beach time there. And if you look at the amount of beach we have this year, you know, the cost per foot's pretty good for them, because we have a lot more beach, so I'm glad that we're looking at this. Thank you for all your work.
Thanks, appreciate it, Clark. All right, Amy, go ahead.
I just got a couple of questions, and on what happens if, if three other people want to come in and start doing weddings every Saturday morning as well? Do we have to feel obligated to issue them a commercial use agreement as well?
I don't think we do. I think that we're, what we're trying to do is get a handle on how much is being used commercially, and if we feel like this is, there's too much, we don't have to issue on every, on every day and every, every time. I think the idea is finding out what fits for our, our community.
I have an issue with it, because if, I think it's, it's muddying the waters, and I think it's bringing up an issue that I don't think we have a problem with at this point in time. My opinion is, they've done it in the past, let them keep going. If it's, if it doesn't work for them, if they start having people in the background doing the peace sign in their pictures, maybe they won't want to do them there anymore. I think our community is fully involved at this point in time, and if they, if there's too many weddings or too many of this, I think the community will let them know. To me, it just muddies the water, and it makes it very, very confusing for being equal, being justice. If, if I'm a student driver and I teach students how to drive, I don't have to get a special use agreement to drive on the city roads and train my kids how to drive. I mean, I've already got my license from the state to conduct business, I've got my tax ID, and I, I have that business. I don't have to pay for each road I drive on, on, in the city. So then, then it brings up the whole issue with food trucks. You got food trucks for commercial agreement. You know, my, my thoughts is, is it's just going to confuse the whole thing. There should be, food trucks could be in, in, and the Planning Commission is working through it, but it can be on a private, privately-owned commercial space business. I don't think the city should get into picking winners and choosers, and which business can be on the north beach and which business can't, and, and how many can be there. It's public space, it's open to the public, they do it at their own risk. That's my input.
Good. Any other comments from up here, or public?
I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm supporting this, the locations, the times. I don't see an, an issue, I don't see it interfering with the, the public use of, of this section of beach, so I'm in support of it.
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather have us issuing permits than having it be a free-for-all, and then potentially ending up with more events all over the place. I like us being able to dictate how many is enough for us. And I, I did look up, a lot of other communities do similar permits for beach weddings, so I feel like it's pretty consistent with what other places are offering, so that's why I support this.
Very good. Yeah, we've done these before. I do have concerns that it's commercialization of a public space. That said, it's been occurring. So I think back to festivals along Water Street, and we got to a point where we said we wanted to limit them, and so we started to say, okay, only so many along that, we limited activity because we felt there was too much. Since we've done that, we've had very little going on down there. Now we're, you know, so anyway, that's, we have the ability to ratchet this back if we need to. That's, it's under our control. We can ratchet it back next week if we need to. So this body has that control if it becomes a problem. So I, I will be in support as it stands. I would be curious just to maybe look at those start times and stop times, just to make sure we're optimizing, I mean, whatever, work with everybody to make sure we're avoiding prime time for the beach.
Well, we will do that. Also, I think there was an error in here about Thursday PM yoga for Ms. Carpenter, so we'll make that change as well.
Okay. We've got a motion, we've got a second.
So what are we voting on, then? Something that's going to be negotiated differently than what we're voting on in the agreement tonight?
I think we're voting on the agreement as written, I just asked to, you know, just make sure the hours are agreeable to all, that's all. So. There we go. We got a motion, we got a second? Shall we roll call it?
Probably.
Let's do it.
Oh, Nuki?
Yes.
Reaser?
No.
Schlag?
No.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ocean Carries.
And Arnold.
And Arnold.
Yes.
Arnold.
Good job. You get to be mayor for a minute. Good job. And that passes, so thank you, and thanks for coming and sharing with us tonight. Thanks for coming. That takes us to, we will be hearing an update from our Public Works Director, Mr. Bill Hunter. Is he back there? Oh, there he is, back. Good evening, Bill. Happy Monday night, Bill.
Your Honor, City Council. Last meeting, I was asked to, to give kind of a, not an update, but kind of like, how did we get to Water Sewer Authority? And these slides are going to go over that. Our Water Sewer Authority, SHASA, South Haven Water Sewer Authority, is responsible for 109 miles of water main, 101 miles of sewer lines, 31 lift stations. Our water plant has a firm capacity of 5.4 million. That means we're restricted as our intake. Our intake can only do 5.4, so a new intake would give us 7 million gallons a day. A wastewater plant has a design capacity of 2.1 million gallons, and our current average flow is 1.39. Population served is 11,305. That takes into account all the services, and we do just do the households, and we do per census, so we take that census data per household, and that's why we come up with 11,305. That's Casco, South Haven Township, and the city of South Haven. So how did we get here? How did we get to an authority? Y'all kind of goes back to, I mean, I'm sure there were meetings prior to this, but this was the big joint one we had at Lake Michigan College campus, where we had a joint board meeting with Casco Township, South Haven Township, and the city of South Haven. And that was when they formally got together and said, how can, how can we make one work? And there was four things, and I put a little reminder, let's remember this slide, four things that they all agreed, let's do an authority as long as all the parties are treated fairly, there's no loss of local control, will not increase customer costs, users will benefit, and will not be an extra complicated. And in November 7th of 2016, City Council approved Resolution 2016-87, authorized the mayor and the city clerk to execute the SHASA agreement contract. Why should we consider actually a regional authority? Well, the state now, anytime you have a sanitary surveys study, which is done, it's, it's kind of like our evaluation with the state of Michigan. State of Michigan comes in and they, they evaluate all of your records. And they also have started to look at this, are there places regionally that you can hook onto? Say, for example, in your capital improvement plan, you talk about upgrading your water plant, but does your neighboring community have an excess capacity? And they want to, that's strongly encouraged now, so that's, part of it is incentives. Prior to actually the authority, we already were kind of, I'd like to call it an ad hoc authority already. We had the Board of Public Utility, which overseed the electric, water, and sewer, and we had ex officianto members, which were Casco Township and South Haven Township. And already, we were kind of acting like one, but without the benefits. Couldn't call ourselves an authority, we couldn't go out for debt for it, so we kind of acted one for many of years. of acted one for many of years, just never really, so just, I believe the contract we finally did, we kind of just buttoned everything up. And proven, proven efficiencies, reduced duplications and lowering customer costs. Prior to SHASA, uh, one customer would have to go to at least four different locations before they even got a permit to tie onto the system. Now we have one-stop shopping just at the City of South Haven. They just come, they get their estimate and they go pay here at City Hall. So prior to that, it was very complicated. And I met quite a few customers that had to talk them off, I like to say, talk them off the ledge because they were very frustrated. I was told to go here, now I came here, but now I came here. It was a, it was a lot of driving one customer would have to do. Replace current, uh, one is the replace current complicated contracts and debt framework. Uh, when I first got here, there was like seven different contracts. We had multiple ones, addendums to, uh, between South Haven Township, the original authority, when the authority was actually renamed, uh, between the cities. So you had to reference for, now we have clean, uh, ordinance, a clean rules and regulations, and we don't have to reference through all those, but sometimes they would contradict one another. Uh, the minimizing actually a future, uh, legislative actions, contract changes. So now, for example, applying, um, I did come to this board as, as a SHASA member for our, ARPA funds, but I went to other ones. I didn't have to go like multiple ones and it was, I was able to represent SHASA and get those funds that way. Maximizing, uh, facility utilization before expansion. Uh, before, actually, we had three different systems or four different systems. Now we're have, we have one system and now we can actually look at how do we approve the one system? Plus what it helps us doing is on water reliability Sundays. The state would require three of them, now we're requiring one, and the state looks at the one whole instead of versus three separate ones. Uh, recognizing the township's payments for facility costs, provide one-stop shopping, went over that, empowers all stakeholders with a voice in decisions. I'll go over that in a little bit. A common approach is the systems care, meaning you have one person or one group overseeing the three systems, which is beneficial to the system. You have one mission, one goal, now you don't have three separate ones. Improving, uh, system of stability with larger customer base. Uh, next slide is, uh, what law authorizes regional authorities? There's two. There's the nineteen fifty-five Public Act two thirty-three, which the Casco, the old authority, Casco, South Haven Township Authority. Uh, the, the one we're under right now with SHASA is the, uh, MPA or, uh, twenty-eleven Public Act two fifty-eight. That, that, um, MPA allows for more flexibility, particularly in funding. Uh, next slide goes over purposes. And this, you'll see this purpose actually, I, I can read everything in there. Bottom line is SHASA is acquiring, owning, leasing, constructing. SHASA covers everything. They cover everything in the system. But it is limited actually due to our agreement. Limited power for just the water in the sewer and provides broad powers as limited by the contract and intended to serve just the three communities. The governance, we have, uh, seven board members and four-year term serving. Uh, three are appointed by the City of South Haven, two by Casco Township and two by South Haven Township. We're currently are one seat vacant actually in the, the City of South Haven, so we have six members at this time. Powers, this is all taken actually from the agreement. As you can see, I could read them all, but, uh, as you just go down, it is, gives you all the powers of any municipal authority to build, construct, lease land, adopt rates, rules, regulations, ordinances. Uh, allows us actually to, um, petition the state for different funding on behalf of the other communities. Next slide, ownership and control. State, uh, constitution requires a vote to convey a water system. So our contract, uh, the water system is conveyed in the townships. So the townships, actually SHASA owns the Casco and South Haven Township. However, in the city, uh, we would have to have a vote of the people actually to do it. So there's a lease actually with a one dollar a year and that's it. And now SHASA takes care of our system for us. But like you said, the other ones, the townships, it's all been over to the SHASA. So that's the only difference. Um, and that's sometimes is a little challenging in our assets. We do show the assets on our books, but then they also, the assets are on SHASA's books. The only way to actually get them off our books would be for, again, a vote of the people. Rosemary does a great job with the assets because she does incorporate them. She officially puts them in our, uh, at the, our end of the year finances. However, she, she puts them in there, but then the asset has to take them out, but she shows them to the group so we can actually see what it would look like. So it is beneficial. Uh, SHASA, um, SHASA would control and operate, manage as if absolutely owned it all. SHASA could not sell their lease or convey the system, so SHASA can't sell the system from you, we can't convey it. Any also, and this will be mentioned later on, any expansions within the city have to come back to this board. And there's a reason why that, we'll go back later, because there is a clause where we can, at, with a two-year notice actually, if we ever decided to split or go our separate ways. But that's why you would have to have that approval by this board for the expansion because you would be taking that debt back over once actually the agreement would be dissolved. Operating, um, principles, all users or retail customers are treated equally. The board can approve expansions of the system provided it does not impair or, uh, existing service. System expansions need to be approved by the township and city council. Adopt, enforce rules and regulations and rates are set at, for, rates are to pay for all costs. So we don't have other funds coming in unless something from the state, so. Funding or rates, fees, changes, special assessments, contribution from local governments, uh, contractual payments and other miscellaneous income could be, uh, ARPA funds, it could be any other grants for water, uh, Safe Water Drinking Act, uh, the Clean Water Drinking Act, so. Uh, next one is debt. Any due debt requires approval by the township boards and city councils, so revenue bonds, contract bonds, installment purchase agreements, special assessment bonds, Act one eighty-five. New debt will be issued by SHASA but not by local government, meaning actually SHASA actually will, once approved by this board, SHASA will actually take the debt on themselves. Existing debt will be paid by the rates, paid by current users, already paying the debt or by local government. Local governments like City of South Haven, Casco Township and Town, and South Haven Township pledge full faith and credit. And there's a reason why, which we'll go back, we'll go in a little bit, is that clause of two years, because like I said, and this has happened before, where authorities have disbanded. Well, when you disband, it gets kind of muddy, but usually whatsoever in your existing area, you take on that cost. So if there was an improvement here where a bond was taken on, that city takes back that bond or that full payment. That's where it comes from, that full faith. Rates are, current debt service charges continue until debts are paid, meaning going into the authority, the existing debts that each municipality had, they're still paying on those and they're paying on those separately. If there were special rates, which there are in South Haven Township and Casco Township, they still pay those. And those are paid from those separate fees and we keep track of that. And if we had any that we had before that, we're paying those as well. So, but any new, new debt, the whole group takes on, or any new costs, that whole group takes on. Uh, no free services, and that's written several times, and I have to remind people that when they want. For example, they call in, can you waive this? I can't waive fees set by the board. And I strongly say that to them every time. So a lot of times, if you read my minutes, you'll see multiple appeals because people want to appeal my decision about not waiving a fee. I don't waive fees, fees are set by the board, it's a cost. I let the board decide on waiving any fees. SHASA board will set rates on cost of service basis. You mentioned, you'll hear that a lot of times, I always mention it. I mentioned that last, uh, meeting, cost of service rate study. That's a cost of services. Our fees, we have it, uh, the last one we just had updated and we have an increase coming soon, four and a half, over four years of both water and sewer. Uh, arrangements, uh, SHASA, uh, contracts with the city for services based on the actual cost provided for services, meaning whatever were, whatever costs were associated with the water and sewer, we pass right on to SHASA. So it's just a transfer of funds. We'll show it initially in the city books and it gets transferred right over. Other provisions, and this is what I mentioned previous about, and I referred to, is the withdrawal with a two-years notice and the continuing debt obligation. Uh, termination results and disposal of SHASA assets, there's about two ways to do it, as directed by parties or the following way, the system components, the local governments in which they are located. I made reference to that. If there's an improvement in Casco and all three during SHASA were paying it, if we dissolved, Casco would take on that debt. And, uh, the last slide is just, it goes back to remembering that one slide we had in front. All parties are treated fairly, so equal partnership. That goes by with, uh, making the, appointing the boards. Each governing board appoints those members, so the city accounts, city, City of South Haven appoints the three members, Casco Township, South Haven Township. Uh, no loss of control, uh, will not increase, uh, customer costs, users will benefit and will be, uh, no extra costs or complicated. And I believe actually, since we've done it, since twenty eighteen, originally in twenty eighteen, it was kind of clunky. I think we're finally, I think it was a huge achievement just to get where there's now just one location. That was Mammoth, just to get one location for a customer to go to. I thought that was a big achievement. There's more to come, but I think it's getting smoother as we go. So is there any question City Council has on SHASA water and sewer authority?
Questioned anybody?
I have a question.
We're good. Appreciate it. But thank you.
Thank you.
Glad it's working well, so. Mr. Arnold, would you like to make a motion?
Uh, this time I'd make a motion, we take a five-minute recess.
Second.
All right, motion, second, take a five-minute recess. We'll see everybody at nine oh five.
Aye.
Boom.[1325.63]
Walt Placotti, 559 Monroe Boulevard. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Last week, I delivered to you guys the results of the survey, and there've been a lot of questions. We've received some requests to like, put together a presentation or whatever, but we feel that that's beyond the scope of our mission entirely. And, you know, we just wanted to report what the 560 respondents replied to the survey. So, we asked seven questions in total. Six of those were straightforward choices that require really no interpretation whatsoever. The seventh question was open-ended, and it's best left for our elected officials to determine what message their constituents were sending. We will be releasing the data to the public shortly, but here is the raw, unfiltered data that we received from the six questions and that you also got. "Since the adoption of the short-term rental ordinance in 2016, would you say that your neighborhood has improved, worsened, or change, or no change whatsoever?" Fifteen percent said it improved, forty-one percent said it worsened, and forty-four percent said no change at all. Question number two was, "Do you think there should be restrictions on the number of business short-term rentals on any given street or neighborhood?" Twenty-seven percent said no, seventy-three percent said yes. Question number three, "One argument made for short-term rentals is that they are critical to our city's economy. Which of the following statements most closely matches your opinion?" Four percent said business short-term rentals have provided a positive benefit primarily to permanent city residents. Thirty percent said business short-term rentals benefit permanent city residents, tourists, and investors equally. Sixty-six percent said business short-term rentals have provided a positive benefit to only investors and tourists. Question number four, "Do you consider short-term rentals, business short-term rental, or, excuse me, do you consider short-term rentals in your neighborhood that are not owner-occupied to be a business or a residence?" Twenty-five percent said a residence, seventy-five percent said a business. Question number five, "How do you feel about the balance between permanent city residents and business short-term rentals in your neighborhood?" Twelve percent said it didn't apply. The question didn't apply. Two percent said there are not enough short-term rentals. Twenty-seven percent, there's a good balance between permanent residents and short-term rentals. And fifty-nine percent said there are not enough permanent residents. And question number six, "South Haven's current ordinance permits business short-term rentals in all residential zoning districts. Which of the following statements best matches your opinion?" Fifteen percent said short-term rentals should be restricted to only select zoning districts. Thirty-four percent said that they stated the current, they supported the current ordinance. And fifty-one percent said single-family residential districts should not have any more short-term rentals allowed. So question number seven was an open-ended question asking what recommendations respondents had for amending the current ordinances. There were four hundred and seven responses. "We're not ready to interpret that data, as we do not want to present any suggestion of bias. It is best interpreted, ward by ward, with each council person listening to their constituents' suggestions." We provided the mayor the overall responses as well. "We'd be happy to suggest an objective facilitator to work through the data in a workshop with you if that is what you would like us to do."
That's tough. Wow, good job.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it. You practiced that. Good job.
John Lorsdorf, 23 Delaware Court. And good evening, council members. I'm here to discuss the proliferation of these very large, three-story, thirty-five-foot mini-hotel business short-term rentals that seem to be occurring more and more now in our community and in our residential areas. In looking at the zoning ordinance, in looking at the purpose, it says that "It's based upon a comprehensive plan designed to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare, to encourage the use of land in accordance with its character and adaptability, to ensure that the uses of land shall be situated in appropriate locations and relationships, and, among other things, the character of each zoning district and its peculiar suitability for particular uses and the conservation of property values." And then, in the residential district, it says, "These districts are designed to preserve the character of the single-family residential neighborhood in the city from intrusion by incompatible land uses." And I submit that maybe when the council passed the ordinance years ago, to allow single-family residents to become short-term rentals, if you're in a neighborhood that had a ranch style, or maybe a two-story, converting it into a short-term rental might still be compatible with the character of the neighborhood. But now, we're seeing these large, three-story hotels coming into the neighborhood, and it simply is not an appropriate location or relationship. It hurts the property values of others, and one just has to get down to Erie Street and see that large structure next to a home that had been there for decades, and now that home value is going down, but it doesn't fit the neighborhood. And so what I'd like to suggest to the council is that they consider doing a moratorium on these large, three-story structures to give the planning commission time to evaluate them as it relates to the single-family residential district, and also to consider the height. This needs to be reviewed. The lot size coverage needs another look at. The setbacks, the one on Erie Streets, three feet, there's a lot of homes that need, this needs to be reviewed again. They're simply too close to each other, especially these large buildings that are going up. So I'd like to suggest a moratorium to stop the construction at this point, to pause it until the planning commission can review this and send recommendations back to the council before these neighborhoods are really impacted in such a negative way that it defeats the property values and destroys the character of the neighborhood, which the zoning ordinance specifically states is one of the purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Now, Kate, we have a review coming up. We have a review coming up of our zoning ordinances, correct? When will that occur?
Well, we should be rolling that out here in a couple months here.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Joe Wilkins, Agent 11, Indiana Street. And I'm here to talk a little bit about short-term rentals, and I'm totally against, I'm not against it, but I'm totally against the numbers that we have. I stated before, and this was a couple of years ago, that I thought it was a zoning issue, and I believe that because of the experience coming up, there was a young guy that Ward One was cutting hair in his home, and the city came in and said he wasn't allowed to do any hair cutting because his house, his home, was in zone commercial, for commercial businesses. Fast forward to this day and time, and we're allowing, it's really just a zoning issue. So we see where there's a big change. But I think when we talk about short-term rental, that we need to address the total number of short-term rentals, and we need to reduce those. These are just a list of items that I had written down from previous meetings. We need to deal with the density and fix those, with the exception, I think, and I heard Steve talk about that in Ward One, I mean Ward Three, get rid of the automatic passing of short-term rental license when someone buys a home, or sells a home. Predetermine how many people are allowed. We need to do that with short-term rentals. And also stop the passing of license to new homeowners, and I don't think the racial, I don't agree with the racial. And short-term rental has, of course, we've heard this before, affects businesses, restaurants year-round. We've seen what it's doing to the school populations. Year-round residences affecting that. And, of course, the affordable housing is being affected by short-term rentals, and I even, as a pastor, see it in churches. So those are some of the impacts that we know short-term rental is causing this city. And I would like the council to keep in mind, I heard Al Walk lay out his discourse on what he believes residents want, and I totally agree with that. We need to do something with this short-term rental. And the housing situation with Clinton and Erie Street, that's a catastrophe. I mean, and I was worried about it because it hasn't happened in our neighborhood, Ward One, close to me, yet, but looking forward, I said before, we got, I have two older residents beside me. There's one house going up behind me that we believe that it's going to be short-term rentals, and they putting, taking up every inch of their space. Taking those houses three stories up, you don't have privacy in the backyards anymore, and so I'm worried about the two houses beside me that could easily be bought in short-term rental houses put up beside us, and it would just destroy the makeup of our community, of our neighborhood. And so, yeah, I think the city has to really step up and do what's right, stop all this stuff that they're allowing to happen. These homes going up on top of each other, other residents' property, and so that's my take on tonight when dealing with the Erie Street and Clinton Street, as well as short-term rentals.
Thank you, Joe.
David Viestra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. I also support the construction moratorium that John talked about, and I support an immediate indefinite moratorium on new STR application approvals pending the council's evaluation of the STR survey and revision of the current ordinance. STR problems seem to be accelerating, as problems with the construction on Erie and Clinton Streets demonstrate. Personally, I'd like to see a new ordinance that includes at least three things. Decrease of STR density by setting limits either by block or within certain amount of feet. Also, lower the overall number of STRs by attrition. And third, eliminate transferability of permits so that when someone buys a new home, a new house, that they don't inherit that permit. In any case, there is public support for helping neighbors rebuild and protect the neighborhoods that we live in, and it is the responsibility of the council to fix the problems that have arisen over the past several years and seem to be getting worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. I agree with what Dave, Pastor, said, and also Deacon John. STRs are a big problem. I talked about it before in Trailside, and it's going to get worse in Trailside, too, because there's no limits. Again, the PUDs are exempt. That's one of the first things I'm going to ask when, and find out when they're going to have their STR meeting, I think the city council should have an STR meeting as soon as possible to decide to, workshop what we want to do, and decide how the ordinance is going to get changed. And I'd be the first one to be on the committee. I'm glad to even head it up. But we've got a bigger problem, again. We've got another problem with zoning in the 300 Erie Street. I wish the owner would be here, I'm not going to use her name because it's public TV, but 300 Erie is impinging on her foundation. Now, her property line on the survey drawing, it shows, the survey guy did a great job. He showed the overhang of her house over the lot line, over the west lot line, and it said, the front of her house is seven tenths plus or minus onto the, over the other west lot line, the other house on 300. In the back, it said it's point three plus or minus feet over that line. And also, her landscaping is four feet plus or minus and three feet plus or minus in the front. So the survey guy did the right job. The architect designed and drawn the building, he put the building right where he thought it should go, okay? Never took into account where the overhang was and everything. They excavated. They put in the foundation, the building's going up now, it's huge, okay? It's a two or three-story, whatever it is. Guess what? Her foundation is falling down, okay? Her footings are dropping. Guess why? The bearings for her foundation, her footings, is gone. Half of that bearing is gone because they got a foundation right next to it for 300 Erie, okay? No consideration was taken in by the civil engineer on the drawings. The only thing the civil engineer said was, "We've got 3,000-pound footings for this big house, and make sure, you know, everything is correct as far as code is concerned." And so right now, her foundation is falling. It's jiving. There's nothing on the drawings to say, "You've got to build a retaining wall, you've got to compact that." And the only thing it says is the footings on the new house has to be virgin, you know, existing soil, undisturbed. And that's what her footings were on originally, until they took half of it away, okay? And guess what? What's a different, what's a common thing here between 77 Clinton and 300 Erie? They're both STRs, okay? And how'd they get to be so big? Because the ordinance was changed. Instead of twenty-five percent, you can fill a house up with property with your building, now it's over like forty percent. So that's how they're able to put these huge buildings, or these huge houses, on these lots, okay? And a lot of it are STRs, okay? They gotta be, we gotta be careful. The drawing, the drawing was correct from the surveyor, but it was wrong from the architect. And everybody could see the drawing, it's obvious. To look right at, look on the building permit, right now, you just pull the building permit, they're all right there, all the drawings, and the first thing that comes up is a survey drawing, and it shows you that, hey, her property is over that line. It was done in 20, 1925. They probably didn't do a survey, or if they did, it wasn't very good, okay? And they never looked at it. The architect never looked at it. And then when issued the permit, it should have been obvious, hey, wait a minute, her property is right on that line, and that other building's coming right to it within a couple of feet, and we're going to put a footing and a foundation wall there. This has got to impact her property, but nothing was brought up. And so she doesn't know what she's going to do right now, but that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything right now, Kate, about, I mean, we've been through those drawings, but I mean...
Right. 300 Erie, the new house is properly situated with its setbacks, so it meets our zoning code, because we don't go to the other structure, we go to the property line. Unfortunately, the other house was built on the property line and does extend over into the other property. Yeah, so it's very unfortunate. As for the damage for her house, she's going to have to seek some kind of really civil remedy, I believe.
Okay. Perfect. Come on up, Sarah.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Brown. I'm here to speak on behalf of my business, and thank you, Kate, for all your communication with me lately.
Can you share your address as well?
Oh, yes. 06402 County Road 689. I'm the owner of Sincerely K&amp;J. We are a luxury picnic pop-up company. I'm a South Haven resident, and both my business partner, Caitlin Kenrich, and I have lived in the South Haven area the majority of our lives. I'm here tonight to speak as a business being directly affected by the city's talks in regards to the commercial park use agreement. I would like the opportunity to explain our business model and explain why we feel we should be considered to continue business operations specifically on Packard Park Beach. Firstly, if you're not familiar with us, we started in June of 2021. We set up luxury-styled picnics for our guests along the lake shore. Our average guest count for our service is six guests. Our client books a picnic experience with us on our website. We come and set the picnic up, as mentioned, primarily on Packard Park Beach on the date they request. Normally, our picnics consist of one to two four-foot by two-foot tables, table linens, and non-glass tableware. We're very conscious of the beach rules and encourage our guests to follow those as well. We return one, one and a half to two hours later to clean and pick up our provided items. We do not provide alcohol, and again, encourage our guests to follow that rule as well. We do not do any sort of vending or marketing on public property. We're a unique service business to offer a one-of-a-kind opportunity for locals and tourists alike, which we had the opportunity to service many groups in South Haven last year. Our guests are aware that they are being serviced on a public property and are given the opportunity for us to come to a private location as well. We first received communication from Michelle Kofi on March 30th informing us of the commercial park use agreement that was going to be passed in February. We began the process of obtaining the correct insurance as requested and naming the city as additionally insured. We have done that, and doing our due diligence to follow the city's permitting process. We later found out that that obviously was not passed, and these new agreements are now being put into place for barefoot weddings and bungee yoga, and we're contacted directly about that by Kate. I know there have been talks, obviously, in regards to weddings on the beach in these meetings, and I can assure you, this is not our target market. While our biggest request is for bachelorette party brunches, we do not provide wedding services here in South Haven. The only type of wedding we have ever offered is a small elopement picnic, normally for a maximum of ten people. So we don't fit into the category of 50-person beach weddings whatsoever. We had planned to start offering our unique experiences here this month and hope to be given the opportunity extended to barefoot weddings and bungee yoga for an agreement as well. We've been welcomed with open arms in surrounding communities, including Sagatuck and St. Joe. I worked directly with the Sagatuck City Manager and checked all permitting processes there, and nothing like this exists there. We've done our due diligence to best represent those communities. We are heavily involved with social media marketing and pride ourselves on that. We've also partnered with local businesses here in South Haven, including Lake Arvesta and Think Bar Co., working. We have great relationships with both of them and can offer a really unique service as well. We would truly appreciate the opportunity to have approval from the city to continue offering our services here. And I know I talked to Kate, and she mentioned it would hopefully be on the agenda coming soon, so I just wanted the opportunity to introduce and explain our business. I think we had gotten grouped in with barefoot weddings and bungee yoga, and we just are not the same type of business model, so.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Aaron Cobb, 914 Center Street. I'm here to talk about the trash pickup. I was told... I was told by someone at the city, the reason you transferred from, I mean, you changed from Republic to Best Way because some people wasn't satisfied with Republic. But now, Best Way is okay, I guess, but Best Way, between Best Way and the code enforcer, I am, me personally, having a problem because I didn't got two letters from the code enforcer. Republic, you put your stuff out on Sunday night. You could go get a set of furniture on Saturday and set the old furniture on the road on Sunday night. It would be picked up by Republic on Monday morning. Best Way, you got to, you got to remember what day to put a certain stuff out. Because I've seen people put both garbage cans out on Wednesday. Best Way to pick up one of them, they have to take the other one back and put it back still full. Republic didn't do that. And I guess my question is, why the city would go to a company that do less than the other one? Because if I get some, not just me, you get some furniture, you get something, and you want to put it out on the road. If Best Way don't pick it up, the code enforcer is going to come by the next day, he's going to send you a letter. We didn't have that problem with Republic. Just one day, Monday, they pick up everything. And that's the problem. I didn't got two letters from the code enforcer. I got one for my house and one for the building I live in. People were working on the building, they took some stuff off and they laid it side to road. But that wasn't the week that Best Way was supposed to pick up. That kind of stuff. And I don't even know why they pick up, you know, stuff that's not in the garbage can. And I called them, and they told me that, that they had a waste dump out on, what street is that? You go down on 43, you turn at the roundabout and go left out there. It's the Best Way got a, got a dump out there. You can go out there on Tuesday and say it. But if you do that, you got to pay somebody to take the stuff out there. And Republic, you didn't have to pay nobody, do nothing. Just you put the stuff on the road and they picked it up. And, you know, I just kind of wonder why did the city switch from Republic to Best Way when Republic had better service? Not for me, because I know they picked up everything. And Best Way do not.
When you're done, I'll answer.
And, and, and another one of the problem is that the code enforcer, he comes around so quick. On Thursday, he come around, he'll send you a letter if your garbage can is not back. And Best Way will set the garbage can down on the street. Republic will put the garbage can back up on the curb. Only way a car could hit the garbage can, with Republic, they had to come up on the curb. Best Way, it sets it right down on the street. And it's just something with Best Way and Republic and the code enforcer because, you know, I, I came down and I talked with him, and he said, well, in 24 hours, your garbage can has to be back on the street. I said, well, what? If I put my garbage out on, on a Wednesday and I'm going out of town, don't come back to Friday, I'm going to get a letter? He said, well, you need to call. But if I'm just going somewhere for a day, why should I call the city? If the city would have Best Way to make sure they swing the garbage can back up on the curb and don't set them out on the street.
Thank you. So, the service was changed. We had a lot of customer service related issues with our previous provider. And I know, I mean, Griffin, you went over that contract in depth, but I mean, I know we've expanded recycling, yard pickup. And I mean, you want to elaborate any others? I mean, yes, we have the, there are set schedules.
Yes.
And I believe our last service was picking up stuff they weren't supposed to be picking up.
Correct.
If I recall correctly, like things that shouldn't be putting out.
We're still, we're still, again, just to put everything into perspective, I think what Pastor Cobb's mentioned, you know, there's definitely some truths there. It is a learning curve for people who particularly have lived in this community for a long, long time and were used to a pickup day on a certain day. One of the changes that was made is that for certain segments of the city, it was split into three sections, and now there's three different pickup days. You could get your garbage picked up on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, depending on what part of the city you live in. Bulk item pickup, there is also a change because all bulk item is picked up on Wednesdays. And it's, it's done that way because it's picked up in a different truck. It's not the same truck that goes around on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays and picks up your garbage. Bulk item residents need to call ahead of time to schedule, and if they do, and it is out on Wednesdays, it will get picked up. Pastor Cobb's is correct, though, that if an individual doesn't call ahead of time or doesn't get it out on the right day, there is a chance it might not get picked up. And our new code enforcement officer is doing the best he can to patrol the, the community and enforce these rules that we have in place. So, if people do get courtesy notices, I would first encourage them to, to realize it's, it's a courtesy notice, it's, it's, it's a warning, it's, it's a friendly reminder.
I think it's also, you know, we can, we are always trying to work with our residents and work with Best Way. I got to tell you that we're very happy with, with their customer service. Hold on just a second, sir. And I think that we'll be happy to facilitate any kind of issues. This is the first I've heard that, that Best Way is not able to put the cans back up on the curb, so that's something we can see if we can work with them on.
And we're still within the first six months of this new contract, so there's definitely learning going on, on, on both ends. And I know this week, we're putting additional reminders. I think they actually got out today. We know we've got our, some seasonal residents coming back to town, and we put some additional reminders out to make sure that they're reminded of the schedule changes and some of the changes to service. And I know Best Way is getting ready to send another mailer out to everyone. So, we'll do the best we can to continue to communicate with people.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay.
Tom Peel, 522 Superior. I just wanted to let you know that for the last three weeks, Best Way has not picked up recyclable trash on Superior and the school and other roads around there. They pick up regular trash Tuesday, the, excuse me, Mike, and, but has missed picking up recyclables for the last three weeks.
So, recycling's only picked up every other week, so that's a friendly reminder to people that if you're not putting it out on the right day or on an off week, they're, they're not going to collect that.
This is similar to Best, I'm sorry, this is similar to Republic. It was every other week with Republic, so.
And if you're...
I believe that this is, for your, for where you're living right now, your recycling day should be picked up tomorrow. So, if you get that, your can out tonight, it should be picked up.
Now, what is this?
Your recycling can?
I, I'm, as far as my knowledge was, we were supposed to have both of them picked up on Wednesday, but they're picking up trash on Tuesday and not picking up recyclables for the last three weeks.
It's...
I, I, I'm not aware of what the rules are or stuff. I've been putting my trash out and taking them back in for three weeks now. And that's not what's happened before.
We'll follow up with you after, after this. We'll get your number, and we can connect with Best Way and get that sorted out for you.
Thank you.
Change of topic. Nancy Nat, 125 Alkenberg. First of all, Fruit Street Kitchen, the food truck has added such a bright light to our ward, and I'm just really happy to see something that the city worked on. Pastor Cobb's allowed it to go onto his property. And I talked to Monique. She's very happy being an empowered entrepreneur in our city. So, I just see that as an example of where the city, businesses, and citizens work together to really make a positive impact on a certain area. That being said, I'm back to Trailside and the contamination issue. The non-compliance with the do care and the toxic exposure. I received a letter from city staff last month, and I just took an excerpt from it. And what it basically said, and I'll read from it, is, "Based on multiple discussions and meetings with Eagle, the developer and our consultant, it is our understanding that the developer of the Trailside Everett Park is currently exercising appropriate do care." That is not, it's blatantly not true. There still is exposed soil, and most recently, a half-hazard construction fence was put in, and that is now halfway torn down. And you can see where the barrier is exposed and the toxic soil with lead and arsenic is once again exposed to the public. So, one more picture to pass along. I'll continue reading. "As this development proceeds with new phases, there will likely be new soil piles, excavations, fencing, et cetera, that will be necessary to build out the infrastructure in the homes proposed on the site. Contaminated soil will likely remain on the site, however, it is required to be managed in a way to ensure the safety of the community and those that live at and around the site. It is our understanding that the developer is currently working with Eagle and plans to address the contaminated media at the, at the site as the project moves forward. Once this plan is approved by the state, the city will expect the developer to comply with this plan. Expectations are not the same as oversight. The city of South Haven, in concert with Eagle and our environmental consultant, will continue regular updates and documentation of do care for the ongoing future. My questions for the city council are, is who was the environmental consultant for our city? And can citizens contact this person? Expectations are not oversight, and what will be done to provide oversight for our community? Are the do care updates and documentation in writing? And if so, please make it available to the public? And will the public be invited to aforementioned meetings with the city developer and environmental consultant? I've asked in letters that I would like to be a part of any committees that they mentioned at the last meeting so that citizens can have input as to what is going on with the environment in our neighborhood. And I will continue to come to these meetings and state my case until I feel and my neighbors feel that we are being protected by the environmental contamination in our neighborhood. We live in a unique neighborhood. Like I said, good things are starting to happen, but these industrial sites are contaminated, and we need to oversee, have some oversight to take care of what's going on there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Pat Gasson, 97 Superior Street. I just want to add my voice to the possibility of a moratorium on new certificates for short-term rentals. I think we have a multitude of problems, which I think the survey brought up. It's, it's not all a disaster, but it's, it's, I never dreamt that now houses would be built near me. They're built to be rentals. Built specifically, not to be a family home. You don't have six bedrooms, six bathrooms, and a one-car garage in Michigan. That's not a family home. So, they're built specifically to that, to that criteria to be a rental. And now, I'm going to have two huge houses within a block of me, right next to each other. There'll be, you know, 12 in each one, if they're even abiding by the standards. And so, that's 24 people and a, and a lot, and a larger lot was split, so now they're going to be, they have more than that, going to be 40 people there, I don't know. But, and, and the renters aren't bad, but that is not, that is not the neighborhood I bought in. I chose South Haven specifically because I love the lake and the town together. I'm saddened. And I, and I think if I, if I knew then what I knew now, I, I would, I would not move here, which is a sad thing because I love it and I've been part of the community and been involved in the community and I think helped the community. But it, somehow, we dropped the ball on this short-term rental thing and that we have this many in our neighborhoods. Whatever happened to single-family residential, it's a mockery. So, anyway, I, I support some kind of moratorium. At least a discussion has to begin on the future of this. And I will add one last thing. They used to put out, I mean, I think, they used to put out a calendar for the year for when the pickups are. So, it would say on that little calendar that I had on my refrigerator, this is recycle week, and this is recycle week, and this is, might be nice to just put it on the website. Is there one?
Yeah, we, we sent that out early in January. I've got mine on my refrigerator.
They're going to be mailing another round of those out here in the next month, too.
Yeah, so, I mean, I always had, I didn't know you put one out because, because now it's different, because now I get Tuesdays, not Mondays.
You have three colors to look at.
It's also...
Okay, so, where would I look for that on the? It'll be on our website, plus it'll be mailed out.
It's on the website, yeah.
Okay.
And Best, Best Way also has a web...
And then this gentleman would know.
All right.
What days.
Thank you.
Yeah. Very good. Anybody else?
Danielle Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. And I appreciate the people who come up here with facts and figures. As you have heard me before, I come up here and I speak from the heart. I'm not a facts and figures kind of person, but when the ordinance, part of the zoning ordinance was read and character of neighborhoods is right within that ordinance, it's why we moved to South Haven was because of the character of the neighborhood we moved into. I also recall that as we were driving around and we went, we drove down Apache, and then we drove down Beaver, thinking, oh, we're going to get to the lake, and got partway down and realized, ooh, these streets don't go through and no beach access, and we're scratching our heads and wondering. But then we drove down Pine, and there was a sign in a house window, "No Cass Street Hotel." And we're like, what does that even mean? And we just kind of didn't look into it. And had we, we might not have moved here either. And in a way, I'm glad we didn't know about the changing character of South Haven because I love living here, but I'm also blessed in that there are no short-term rentals right around me. But the buildings that they are putting up and they're, I can't even call them houses. They are monstrosities, McMansions. They're not fitting in the character of the neighborhood. They're not fitting in the character of our town. Quaint, small town, homey, family, fun, young couples, monster houses. We've missed the character piece. And I know that this body is not the group of people that put those ordinances into place, but it is up to you to try to right the wrong that was done before your tenure as our city leaders, who are supposed to be protecting the character of my new hometown.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leonard Mosher, and I live at 763 Center Street. And this is a totally different topic. Now, we're on to parking. I came here tonight because I've tried to work with the people that deal with parking on residential homes. And we've been citing for supposedly blocking the sidewalk with our car. We've had a person come by four or five times, stop out in front of the house, jump out of the car, take a picture, and then take off. Well, the other night, a week ago, I happened to catch the person because it was out there. I asked him, hey, you like taking a picture of my car? And right away, the lady stated, I'm a city employee, jumped back in her car and took off. I don't know what, how anybody that works for the city, we have them right not to introduce themselves and talk to me face to face if they have an issue. The following couple of days... The following couple of days later, we got a citation in the mail with a picture of the car sitting in the driveway. Well, apparently, that picture is not in representation of my car parked in the driveway. My car parts between the street and the sidewalk, in my driveway. I was told by the code compliance person, Jeff, that that is considered parkway. It's not driveway. Oh, okay. So, I looked up the code references. I went online and I looked at the code reference, the city ordinance. It was 300 and something pages long from 2016. And I saw the part about parkway. And parkway is described as the area between the curb and the sidewalk, the grassy area. Okay? The driveway is exempt from being part of the parkway. Okay? So, I called Kelly, I got a call from Kelly Desette back on the 20th, and I told her the same thing, what was going on. And since then, I've been parking my car between my garage and the sidewalk, sideways. My car is now running north and south on Center Street instead of sitting east and west in my driveway. I can't even park my driveway. To make matters worse, we have a special needs daughter that does not walk or talk. She's in a wheelchair. We have to have the availability to load her in and out of the vehicles. Jeff told me, oh, well, you get five minutes to park across the sidewalk to unload and load. Well, that's not reasonable accommodation for us. You know, we bought that house because it was already handicap accessible. And my wife and I, I've had 51 years here with South Haven. My family, my grandparents lived here. They had a Christmas tree farm over on the other side of the highway. And when we came back from Florida a few years back, my wife, I said to her, I said, well, where do you want to live? Because I was working in Grand Rapids and I wanted to live closer to Grand Rapids. Plus, my wife is Dutch, so I figured, hey, we're living in Holland, New Zealand, you know? But no, she chose South Haven because she likes the community here. And I like the community here. I love being able to walk down to the bluff, the kids' corner, with my daughter in the wheelchair, you know, so we can use the handicap swings that my wife.
Got about one minute.
My wife came here in front of the commission to talk about handicap accessibility, you know, for the swings. And it was great. You guys listened and wow, we've got handicap swings now. But my issue is, is I tried to comply. I tried to go through the steps to the right people to get this resolved, and I still have no resolution. And here, I'm parking in a crazy way to park my vehicle. And I made a packet for each one of you to look at the photos that I took from the night that, when that lady stopped by and represented herself as a city employee. For all I know, she isn't. Unfortunately, my wife was able to take a picture of her out there in the street, you know, after she took a picture of our car. And the other thing was, is Jeff said that he had taken picture of our car, but I never got a picture of it. And then, when I asked him, I said, I said, did you know that community help was over at our house that night? Because they were there to do an assessment of my daughter. So, how can I control on who parks where in my driveway?
Gotcha. That's time. What I'll do is I'll have, let's double back. Let's staff talk with you on this situation, okay? I can't speak to it tonight because I've never heard of it before tonight. So, let me work with staff. We'll figure that out.
I understand, but, you know, I like to go through channels. You know, I was in the military and you start low, but I've just got nowhere.
We'll work with staff. Thank you. Anybody else? I ought to turn into a pumpkin.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. First, I would like to ask that the City Council consider having the staff put their names on the staff reports that are included in agenda packets so that there's accountability. Second of all, with regard to reviewing the zoning, zoning, I'm sorry, I, I think that two months is too long to even, just to start. This has been an issue since before the beginning of the year. So, two more months is more than half the year over. I suggest you find a way to get it here sooner than later. I would appreciate a moratorium on STRs also, but with due process, I see that not happening. But there are ways around it to avoid that from happening. There's a lot of issues that I've raised over the last year that just seem to be ignored. First of all, following our zoning ordinance, and I respectfully remind you that the zone, that every lot has a side-back, side-rear and front yards. And that the frontage, the amount of area, needs to be properly accounted. And that does not seem to appear. I'm not convinced, and I haven't gone through all the math yet, that all of the setbacks for 300 Erie are proper. There also is a very constrained definition used at times for different terms throughout our zoning ordinance. I would like to see some uniformity, not only in interpretation, but in application. And to assist with review, I know that since the 77 Clinton debacle that we're discussing policies and procedures, and there's nifty check sheets. I started to draft one. I'd be glad to share it with you. I thought of some other things that came up, like reviewing deeds to ensure incumbences and easements are addressed. But a big area where there seems to always be a fallback is lot lines and anything over the lot lines. So, I think all structures, whether they're on your property or adjacent property, should be drawn so that you actually see exactly where it is. So, the 306 building should have been drawn on the 300 lot. It should, should draw all of the structures so that you understand what is going on. That's not happening consistently. With regard to residences, it's already been said, six bedrooms, that's not a residence. I mean, you approved Overton, low number of, I mean, high number of one-bedroom apartments because the family sizes in South Haven are two or less usually, the average. So, why are we looking to have huge houses with six bedrooms? The only reason is for STRs, for a business in our residential neighborhood. And you need to also take into consideration not just the structure, but the unintended consequences, water runoff. Time and time again, I hear of issues of water runoff on adjoining properties after a structure's been built. There seems to be a disconnect in that review. I don't know where the problem is, but it's definitely systemic. It occurs consistently. I think for the checklist for zoning review would go a long way if you have citizen involvement. I don't think the city, I'm sorry to say, is objective enough. And the best proof I have for that is the 328 memo that reinforced the decisions that this council reversed shortly thereafter. With regard to Trailside, the city spoke with the developer and Eagle spoke with the developer. But after Eagle spoke with me, the Eagle called the developer back and the very next day, fences got delivered. Whenever I contacted Eagle and told them what was going on, things changed because the developer was not complying. So, once again, transparency, accountability, citizen involvement. We don't want to hear what you have to say. We want to be involved with your conversations to make sure the decision is right because so far, we've got concerns. So, we look forward to a discussion on STRs and zoning much sooner than two months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Larry Monz, 210 Clinton Street. First, I'd like to commend the City Council for righting the wrong at 77 Clinton Street. You're all to be commended for that. It was a nice job last week. Thank you. I'm the guy that brought my kids here when they were young to swim at South Beach. I fell in love with the South Side neighborhood. My wife and I retired and we built a, we went out of our way to build a charming home that fit in with the neighborhood on the South Side. Single-story structure, charming little front porch. We really did a lot to try to blend in with that neighborhood. With that said, we're completely surrounded on every side by short-term rentals. Now, we don't view that necessarily as a bad thing. We know tourism is essential for the City of South Haven. But with that said, I'm against these hotels, as people have called it before me as well. They don't fit the neighborhood. And with that said, I'm also against the trailer homes that are put on the South Side neighborhood. I don't think those are a fit. And I believe 77 Clinton is one of those. I don't know how that was ever allowed on that property. We get along with the people that rent around us. We're completely surrounded and we've never had an issue. Yes, they have barking dogs. Yes, they smoke pot. Yes, they play loud music. But for the most part, they're good people. And we meet them, we make an effort to meet them, we shake their hands, we try to get along with them, and we've had some pretty good experiences. But my concern is the density. We're completely surrounded on every side. And then, again, the mega mansions and the hotels that are going up like at 300 Erie, it's, it's just irresponsible. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Dawn. Kate. City manager comments.
Thank you. I do want to let the council know about our joint housing workshop for May 19th. That'll be at the Integrated Learning Center for South Haven Public Schools. It'll run from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is an initiative that we have kind of invited Brian Kilpatrick to come back. This will be also with the South Haven Charter Township. And hopefully, we'd like to see some people there from Van Buren County Senior Services. I do want to remind the council and everyone listening that downtown and beach parking kicks in May 15th, so please set your calendars. We'll be doing some enforcement at that point. We also had some disturbing things that happened over the weekend, as you all may have heard, about the man who fell in Arm Harbor Inn. We do kind of reach out to his family and our condolences. And there's not much I can say about this, but it was a tragedy over the weekend. I do want to thank first responders, the South Haven Police Department, the Shays Dive Team for their work this weekend. And lastly, just to let you all know from our meeting last week, a stop work order has been issued for 77 Clinton and we're working through that process. Those are my comments.
Okay. Very good. Thank you much. Council comments. I'll start at my rate. Mr. Reeser?
I got a letter.
You might want to use your microphone. We've been hearing some people saying.
Sorry. I got a letter from a resident and, and I got emails, I got phone calls. I have never had so many people contact me as I have since the last City Council meeting discussing 77 Clinton. And what this letter says and what many residents said, and I think most of us have heard it, is that the residents felt that night like we listened to their concerns and we voted accordingly. There is not a week, and rarely a day, that goes by that. I don't get stopped on the street. I don't get a phone call. I don't get an email about short-term rentals. And now, it's on our top 10 priorities. And it's not just discuss one piece of it, it's to discuss the whole ordinance. And I think it's time, we have to get it on the agenda sooner than later. We can't let this continually go without hitting it straight on. The issues that I think everyone has said, but I'm going to quickly hit them, is the number that we have in this community is more than any two towns combined along the coast. The density, it's one thing to have 200 short-term rentals. It's another when you have 100 in your two-block area. And I'm exaggerating a little. But people are surrounded by this. There's no more community in some neighborhood, neighborhood, excuse me. The number of people in these homes has gotten out of control. And that's why you're seeing homes completely gutted and rebuilt and enlarged so they can fit more people in it. It doesn't take a brain surgeon to see what's going on. So, I would like to make a suggestion. I'd like to make a motion that A, we put a moratorium, not just because of short-term rentals, but it's because now, we've gone beyond that. Now, we're taking existing property, existing homes, and enlarging it. It's not enough just to take a home and turn it into a short-term rental. Now, we've got to take a home and double its size so we can get more people inside the homes. Somehow, we've got to take a breath and stop this while we can all discuss it. And I, I didn't want to do a moratorium. People know me, I've fought against this. But now, we've got two problems. The number of short-term rentals that are affecting the community. And the second one is taking existing homes and altering them and changing the complexion of our neighborhoods and literally ruining people's lives that are living near them. 300 Erie is a perfect example. And so, is 77 Clinton that we did finally do something about. If we can't do a moratorium, then let's have at least a workshop and have it on the agenda where we can all openly discuss it. Steve said to me, or I said to Steve and a couple of council people, one of the problems I don't like about City Council is unlike my own company, I would stop and talk to all the employees. We would have meetings and go through things. We can't really do that so much on City Council. If you talk to more than one person, you have a problem. We have that attorney here. But a workshop, I think we can talk. So, maybe a workshop is a solution. I don't know exactly what to do. I'd rather have a moratorium and then figure out what to do. If we won't vote on a moratorium, then I'd like to have on the agenda and maybe a workshop, but something where the people in this room and the people in the community can be heard. If nothing else, Walt and his group knocked themselves out to try to get as many people to give their input and people came out and voted their thoughts. Now, you can dispel it's not professional. You can dispel the fact that it wasn't done by a professional group. I got to tell you, there were some professionals that did the questions. But that said, it did clearly strike a chord in this town that it said, the community, the people that live here year-round want a change. They have had too much short-term rentals. So, I'm asking, number one, could we have a moratorium? I'm trying to make a motion right now for a moratorium. And Scott, I'd like to have a vote on it.
You can make it, ma'am.
Is that possible?
He's welcome to make a motion. You can make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to have a moratorium on short-term rentals.
I'll second.
So, we've got a motion, we've got a second. At this point in time, this would just be up for a council discussion, so.
So, putting something, making a motion like this without having it be on the agenda gives no one an opportunity in the community to provide input before we vote. We have had people here, but there's, and I looked at the documents, the comments from the survey, and it is not 100% that people are against short-term rentals. And so, I'm, I am, would be against voting on a moratorium without it being on the agenda, without it being noticed to the community that this is a topic that we're going to vote on.
I would agree with George that, yeah, everything that George said. And while I know what you mean by a moratorium and short-term rental, that's not specific enough. Because we mentioned a construction moratorium. Are we talking about that, too? You know, I mean, you didn't say that, so maybe we're not. Are we talking a moratorium on traditional short-term rentals? Are we talking about the business short-term rentals? So, I can't support that motion.
I think that the people have spoken. Maybe it's not 100%, but I think the majority of the people have spoken here in the City of South Haven, and I agree with Mr. Reeser. So, I support.
Okay. And Scott, to make this maybe easier, I'm okay with what George said, really. I'm okay with putting it on the agenda first and then letting the public speak, we can speak, and then vote on whether we want to have a moratorium or a work- speak, and then vote on whether we want to have a moratorium or a workshop or whatever. Next step is, I just don't want this pushed off anymore. I just want some action. So if that's, so if we want to vote right now on a moratorium, or if we don't want to vote and we want to put it on the next city council agenda, I'm okay with that.
I will not vote in favor because of a variety of reasons, lack of notice. And we've agreed to a process. I guess we've agreed, we set priorities to go through a process for a reason, and this just lies in the face of that. So I guess, for me, we already have a process in place to review this in the next couple of months. So if we just want to flush everything that's currently out, I guess that's, that's where we're at with this council, that we're saying we're just throwing out what's currently out there. We're going to leapfrog A for B. I mean, I think that's what you're, we run the risk. So I guess I feel like we've set priorities in place. We have a process to get those met. That's part of the next process. Don't disagree that it's up for review, but there's a process. Planning Commission asked to review it. We have an ordinance in place. It's been amended already a few times. I would argue it should go through the steps. So at this point in time, let's just vote this one up and we'll see where it goes so we can continue with our comments. Roll call it.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schleck?
No.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
Onuki?
Yes.
Ann Smith?
No.
That is a, four no's and three yeses. This motion fails.
Good. Let's roll on. George?
I have no comments.
Just to touch on the STR thing, I saw those survey results and they were pretty much in line with what I found when I was campaigning in the fall. Even if I didn't bring up short-term rentals, the majority of the people, when I knocked on their doors, brought it up to me as an issue that they're struggling with right now and that they want to see the city kind of step back and reassess what we've decided in that 2016 ordinance when we didn't know what the impacts would be. And I think that we can do that in a way that's healthy without taking away all of the STRs, but just making it more of a balanced situation. So I understand that that's a priority for the next fiscal year. Every time I see a house up for sale in my neighborhood, it really concerns me that it's going to be sold and turned into an STR. And I just don't want to raise my children in that kind of neighborhood. It just makes me sad. But, so that's all I have to say about the STR thing. A little bit of a lighter note, I was talking to Kate earlier about Arbor Day and Earth Day, and someone had mentioned to me before about us becoming a Tree City USA. And actually, the current mayor of Holland asked at one point, who said that he was asking if the city wanted to be a Flower City USA. I just thought those kind of things are nice and something positive to think about that our city could be doing. It's good for the environment. And then lastly, June is coming soon and that's Pride Month for the LGBTQ plus community. And I would love to see us as a city acknowledge that in some way, whether it's a proclamation, an event, just literally anything to show that we are accepting and inclusive, which is, I think, what we want to be. That's my comment.
No comment for me.
No comment.
I just want to say this. I heard Wendy say that we needed balance, and balance is important. And it's really personal for me because I grew up in this community and I'm just kind of concerned because there are two homes being built behind me. No one sends you a notice and say, we're going to build a three-story, short-term rental. And it just seems like it's just so out of control. Am I against someone having a business? Absolutely not. But I just think that there needs to be a balance. And at this point, I just don't feel that we have a balance. And I know that it's on the agenda, but it just seems like it's just been a long haul. And we just, it doesn't feel like we really have gotten anywhere. And it just seems like it's getting worse and worse. Every day you go down the street, there's more homes going up, but no families. And I'm a teacher, so if there's no families, there's no community. There's no use for schools. There's, I mean, no one, there's not going to be anybody here but just older people and short-term rentals and tourists. I would, I would like, and I think I have a right to say, I would like South Haven to remain a community with families.
All right. So I just wanted, again, I know Scott's gone, but the Visitors Bureau did participate last Friday. They helped put on a Trails Education Day in conjunction with Threat Nature Center, the public schools, and it was very well-attended. It was freezing cold, but it was very well-attended. It was a very nice event. So kind of a very interesting note, we were contacted, it's been several months ago now, by the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. And they have what's called the Morehead Kane Civic Collaboration Summer Program. And what this is, is basically it's a, it's a self-directed research project where they're going to send students into our community to do a research project. And we were able to pose a question, a dilemma, kind of what's, what's something our community's struggling with right now. And guess what we chose for them to research? Short-term rentals. So this group of students is going to, with some peer, you know, support and whatnot, they're going to be digging into this for, I'm trying, what's our magic number here? Eight weeks? I'm trying to remember. I think it was about eight weeks, yeah. So they'll be coming in. So again, this is, and just to give you some idea, this is the smallest host community in the program's history. If you would like to, I mean, if you look it up, again, it's, it's a great, it's a very prestigious program, Morehead Kane, but this summer, Albuquerque, New Mexico, Asheville, North Carolina, Baltimore, Maryland, Chattanooga, Tennessee, Cleveland, Ohio, Colorado Springs, Colorado, just some of the cities that will be getting research teams going into. So that'll be something, they'll be coming in May. And so we'll be, they'll, when they're all done, they will be doing a presentation. So we're going to do our best to not influence them. They're going to filter in, learn, research, and they'll report back. So be exciting. And on that note, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Take it.
All right, motion second to adjourn. All who favor say aye.
Aye.
Good night.